Okay, it is two thirty, so we will start our study session on the continuing the 2024 budget evaluation. I don't know if I'll look at Mr. Scranks if he has anything to say.
Generally try to do an introduction, but we are plugging away as staff on this. Debbie's doing the heavy, Debbie and Rick Welch are doing the heavy lifting for sure. I'll let, turn the presentation over to her. It's definitely kind of a collaboration of department head submissions, city manager and finance department review those submissions and putting the budget together, but Debbie knows it backwards and forward and I'll add color commentary.
That's giving me a lot of credit, sorry. Debbie Paff, Director of Finance. As, as Mike said, this is kind of a continuation of a budget, of the budget process and how we like to bring these numbers to you just so that you have some informed information about the decisions that we'll ask you to make when we actually go to that decision day on issues and options. Today, we're going to look at property tax. We did receive our, our evaluations. We'll look at the revenue neutral rate that was provided to us and kind of what that means to us and kind of get your, your thoughts on that. And we've also got the draft budget prepared for all funds. So we've, I've included that information in today's packet. I don't intend to go through every line item with you. I'll just hit some of the highlights and then, and obviously if you have questions, please ask. I did ask the department heads that they were available to come. I gave them a little late notice, but, so several of those are here. If you have specific questions about specific line items or you're seeing increases or decreases, or you just don't know what it is, but feel free to ask because if I don't have the answer, I'm sure they will. So please, please feel free. So the first thing, like I said, we're going to talk about is property tax. I wanted to provide for you and for the public kind of a, how these numbers work for the city because as we know, we get a valuation, but that valuation is not set in stone. So what we're going off of today is not the number that we may get at the end of the day. So I wanted to just kind of review how that process works. So the value of a property is determined on January first of the given year. That value is sent to, to property owners on March first and they have a 30-day appeal period which could change that valuation. June first, the appraiser then provides that information to the county clerk and then by June 15th, she provides that to the taxing entity so that they can use those numbers for their budget process. Once we get those numbers, we go through a process, we, we provide her with the number that the property tax dollar amount that we need to levy in order to make our budget work and that's August 25th. And then on November first, that's kind of the deadline date. She has to certify what that value is because that's when she's sending out the tax bill. So that, and then, once that happens, the property owner just still has one more opportunity to protest that value and that's that payment of taxes. So if you look at that calendar, there's kind of three places in there that, that number could change. It doesn't always, and if, if, when we get to that point of those numbers, I'll kind of point out where those numbers changed for us historically. They don't change a great amount, but they do change. So when we're putting a number out and we say, well, why was, why did you say your mill levy was going to be 30 and now it's 30.005? It's because those valuations are changing and the city, the county clerk sets that number based on what we've requested in property tax. So that's how she's setting that number. If we tell her we need $12 million, whatever that valuation's done to that point as, as of November first, she's going to make that rate be that. That's a little different with the revenue neutral rate, which is the next topic we're going to talk about. With the revenue neutral rates, which was established back in 2021 by legislature, they, they came up with the law that said you cannot levy property tax revenue in excess of what you levied the prior year without going through some additional steps. And so what happens is the set, the county clerk takes our current valuation for this year, which will be our budget for next year, and she says, okay, if we say you had X dollars of property revenue last year and this is our new valuation, she backs into what that revenue neutral rate's going to be. There are steps that were not held to that. That is a city commission decision that you make. The steps that have to happen if we choose, if we choose to follow that rate and say, we're good with that rate, that's, we're good with keeping that revenue, no problem. We, our, our process stays the same. We levy the taxes based on that rate. We move forward, we file our, our property, our budget by August 25th and nothing changes. If you change, if you decide that you want to go over that rate, then there's just a couple of extra steps. We have to notify the county clerk, obviously, that we want to go over that rate and that happens by July 15th. And then she, the, the county clerk actually sends a notification to all taxpayers of all rates that are being changed because not, we are not the only ones affected. The school district's affected, the county's affected. Anybody that levies a property tax is affected by this revenue neutral rate. So she then sends the notification to the taxpayer and says, X, Y, and Z entities are going to raise the rate above that. They're having hearings on these dates. That gives you the opportunity as a system to come forward and say what you want to say about that. So then behind that, once she sends that notice, we, we have to hold a hearing based on that revenue neutral rate, just kind of explaining why we're going over. And then as a city commission, you would have to adopt a resolution stating this is the rate we're going to follow. So it's just a few extra steps. We've done, we did it last year. The first year, we did not go over the revenue neutral rate. Last year, we did. So the process doesn't change a whole lot for either one, but there are a few extra steps. Historically speaking, like I said, 2022, we went with the revenue neutral rate because we had determined that the difference in the tax amount for us was not very much. It was, I want to say 70 or $80,000. So we didn't feel like that was the first year. It's not a big difference for us. We're just going to go with that rate. Last year, however, with our assessed valuations going up as much as they did, you all chose to go above that rate and stay with the rate that we had had previously. We went through that whole process and, and got that rate adjusted up beyond the revenue neutral rate. The next slide is just informational really. This is what is provided by the, the county clerk. She gives us the valuation of all, it's a little hard to read, but the valuation of all the different categories, and I have this in tables on the next slide, and what that revenue neutral rate is that she's setting. She's certified it. And that just, this is our basis of what we're working from as we establish our budget then. From the property tax revenue side, it's important to know that that property tax supports two funds. It provides about 70, 70% of it goes to the general fund, which provides the operations of the city. You know, administration, police, fire, parks, all of those, all of those divisions and departments that are supported under the general fund are supported by that property tax. Property tax in the general fund is about 25% of the revenues in the general fund. As we recall, sales tax is the highest portion. Property tax is our second largest portion of revenue. The other fund that is supported by this is our bond and interest fund. When we, when we get general obligation bonds, we are basically committing ourselves that we will file, we will levy property tax to pay for those bonds. That's our commitment to our bondholders. That's about 23%. Depending on where we, how we divide the, the mill rate, it's about 23% that goes to the, the bond and interest funds. And there's some other support and we'll talk about those as, as far as what bonds or how they're supported with revenue. On the next slide, this is where I gave you that historical data. So on the top spreadsheet, if you look at that, that's, that's our budget year and those are the numbers that we were using when we created our budgets for that year. For example, in 2023, if you look down that column, the valuation that we got at four, at June 20, at June 15th from the county clerk was about four, was $490 million. When she certified that in November, that number came back to $497 million. So in that number somewhere, someone had a protest, it didn't go through, something happened. I don't, you know, that's up to her. She could have added things they missed. We don't get that detail, but the change difference. So what we thought we were going to levy at that point in, in August, didn't happen because she raised the value. So that mill levy went down just a little bit. You can see historically, that number is typical, what we get as a budget number is typically higher than what we get certified at the end of the, at, in November. So it changes, but like I said, it's not a lot. $2 million on $450 million is not a huge percentage, but it does change a little bit. So I just want people to understand that when we say it's going to be this percentage or this rate, it could change slightly based on how those numbers shake out in, through November first. Because some of those, those protests do have to go to Board of Tax Appeals. Some of them are settled here, but some of them do have to go to Board of Tax Appeals. Interesting information, I'd just like to provide this information just for information and it often comes up. Back in 2006, when legislature took away personal property tax on existing property, the city lost a lot, everybody has started to lose a lot of money. So for the city, since 2006, we've lost 32 million, 32.7 million dollars in valuation on personal property by this legislation from 2006. That would have equated in today's rate, revenue neutral rate at $944,000 in property tax. So that's just an important thing to remember as the state makes some of these laws, how that it ultimately affects us forever. And then we have to make that up some other way, either, either in sales tax or property tax fees or something like that. Historically, the next slide on slide seven is just a, a collection, dollars, dollar, what we've collected over the years, dollar for dollar. So you can see in 2022, we collected a little, about 10 and a half million dollars. If we look at what that's done since 2013, it's about a 49% increase since 2013. In my calculations, that was, based on the rate, the mill levy rate, that was about a 16%, 16% of that was from rates. But, and the difference was through, through evaluation. So the assessed valuation raised significantly in that timeframe to allow us to get additional revenue from the tax dollars that we were collecting. And please feel free to stop me at any point that you have questions or comments, or I'll fly right through this because you know that's how it goes.
I know from past conversations, revenue neutral generated questions. Do we want to pause for a second and see if you have questions on how that process works?
The numbers are, but just how it's calculated, what it means, any of those questions?
I had one back there on slide five.
Okay.
Loss of tax due to the
Person property.
06 legislation. That was industrial machinery?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It wasn't just.
It wasn't just industrial, it was equipment held in physician's offices, any, any.
Any, any equipment in any commercial, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep. So basically, any new, new purchases for any commercial customer were not, no longer being taxed.
That includes the million-dollar pieces of equipment out at Kubota and all those that you no longer.
Exactly. So as old ones are shifting off because they're obsolete or they're replaced, that's where that $32 million comes into play.
And I think that's.
Those are old property, pieces of property that.
And I think that's important. I under, you know, the concept is to help bring businesses into your state by doing that, which makes, you know, makes sense, but, and people need to understand that puts more pressure on property taxes because you've taken that out. And I think that's
On real estate.
Where this, on real estate.
Yep.
Where this really makes, is important for people to understand.
That's correct. That's correct. So we're going to talk about the general fund a lot. So, but first I wanted to kind of just briefly go over the debt service fund part of the property tax. So these next couple of slides talk about the, the city's debt service fund. Today, approximately 40, can't read it, $46 million of our, our outstanding bond debt. We do have some notes and loans through KDHG, but these are just bonds. About $46 million of those are supported by property tax. That means when we issued those bonds, we said for a street or an improvement or a, you know, whatever, the law enforcement center, we said property tax was going to be the main revenue source to pay for those bonds. That's about $46 million. You can see the breakdown as we go through about $11 million in special assessments. Sales tax specifically was about 11 million. That was the downtown streetscape project. And then the next slide to the right kind of shows you by project type, where those payments drop off as we pay those off. So you can see they all go down because if you do, and that's assuming there's no new debt. If we didn't have any new debt, those numbers would go to zero eventually, but that's not realistic for anyone. And then the bottom slide is just general obligation bonds. The big slide, the first slide I showed you had revenue bonds, which would be for the utilities and things like that. And then the bottom one is just those general obligation bonds that are supported. If, if nothing else pays for it, we're required by law to have property tax to pay for it, basically, as those general obligation bonds. And then the next slide, I just wanted to kind of give you an insight into how we decide through the budget process, how much of that we need, that property tax, we need to support these. Because if you look at those payments, for example, for property tax-supported projects in 2024, that number looks like it's over $4 million on that slide on page eight. But when we get down to it, there's a, there's a few other things that are supporting that, that, that ease the burden on the property tax. So on slide nine, what we do is we take our total debt payments. So for 2024 is about $14 million, that column under 2024. And we look at every other revenue support that we're going to get to pay that debt. And then we back into what property tax has to support. So some of those other items are motor vehicle tax. The levy on motor vehicle tax includes a levy for the debt service fund, just like every other levy. Delinquent property tax, so anybody that hasn't paid currently, they're paying last year's taxes, that has a portion that goes to debt, to debt service. We've set aside transient guest tax for T-PAC funding, a small amount every year. That number is an estimate. So a lot of these numbers are estimates because we don't know what they're actually going to be collected. So we have to just kind of estimate those. We've included in 2024, the estimate for transient guest tax for the Bill Burke improvements because we intend on having that issued this year. So payments will start next year. Sales tax, when we, when we did the sales tax initiative back in 16, the city decided that they were going to take $650,000 of sales tax dollars and support some older projects that had been done. There's a specific list of them. And every year, we were going to support debt financing of $650,000. So that's transferred to the debt service fund to support that. Then special assessments, that's the dollars that those people are actually paying in. So when we assess them and they pay them in, they pay their tax bill, that's the dollar amount that's supporting those. We do have a couple of project, as I said, that we've, when we've done the project, we've specifically said, we're going to fund this out of sales tax. And that would be the downtown streetscape. And there's a couple of portions from the river renewal. So that portion comes into here. And then, of course, any of the other enterprise funds, so utilities, sanitation, solid waste. Since those are enterprise funds, they're required to support their own debt. So they pay into the fund to help pay for some of those. And it's usually a dollar for dollar. This is what their payment is. This is what we expect them to pay in. And so we net all that out and then we get, out of that four million-ish payment, we get that about 3 million of that needs to come from property tax because we've got some of those other funding sources that, that can kind of alleviate that burden. So that's kind of the process of how we get to that number and how we budget that number. It's very convoluted, but it, it works and it typically, you know, we, if we, if we don't do that, then we're obviously overtaxing for payments that we have other sources of revenue to pay for. So next, the next slide is our revenue neutral discussion and we'll take some time to look at this and then hopefully have a little bit of conversation with you all and, and see kind of what you're doing. In this calculation, all of these numbers are only city tax dollars. We only have control over our own mill levy rate. We don't know what any of the other taxing entities are going to do. And they have until June, July 15th, just like we do to, to let the county clerk know. So the first box of using the 2024 revenue neutral rate, the rate was 28.856 that was provided by the county clerk, split out that way, which we can split it out any way we want. It, it nets us about $15 million in tax revenue. If we were to use our prior year tax, our prior year rate at 30.348, that was what was calculated on November first, when we were certified, that would generate about $15.8 million in property tax, which is an additional about $777,000. If, and I just threw some scenarios out here, if we would go a midpoint between those two rates at about 29.6, that would be about $15.43 million for $2 million of property tax, which is an increased additional revenue of about $388,000. And I know one of the questions we've had in the past is what about new improvements? What's that value? So if we would only, if we only wanted to gain the tax on new improvements, that value is about $158,000 and that would require about a .3 mill increase over the revenue neutral rate to, to gain that amount of dollars.
But there's one point, one important clarification to make there. That's gaining the equivalent. It's not targeting those new improvements
Right, right, right.
For that rate. And it gets spread across the entire tax base.
That gets spread across everybody. That's correct. So basically, I just provided you kind of what each, kind of a multiple, two to different mill rates would do, what that would do for us. Currently, with the assessed valuation that we're working with, a one mill is about $520,000. I did give you a property valuation on a $200,000 home. With the R and R rate, that'd be about $663 in property tax from the city. Using our current rate, that would be an additional $34.32 per year on that same property. Using the midpoint, it'd be about $17.16 per year. And a one-mill change equates to about a $23 a year change in the, in the property tax of, of a property. And that's the amount that, it's not really an increase on their property tax because we're not looking at what they paid last year. We're looking at what that minimum rate would be. So they'd be losing the savings in effect if we went down the mill rate. If their property had stayed the same and we stayed the same, there'd be no change in their property tax. But if their property stayed the same and we had to go down to the revenue neutral rate, they would be getting savings. So they're losing savings, not necessarily paying more, if that makes sense. And that monthly difference over a mortgage is $2.86 at the, at the, today's rate and $1.92 per mill. So I wanted to take some time at this point before we get into the budget, if you wanted to discuss that, give your thoughts. We have on the calendar that we, we do need that decision from you on July 10th, but if you're ready to give it to us now, we're certainly taking.
And one additional clarification, the budget that we're bringing forward to you assumes the revenue neutral rate. So when we talk about general fund, estimated general fund revenue and the budgeted expenditures and the remainder at the end of that process, that's all on the assumption of a revenue neutral rate.
That's correct.
If you want opinions.
And we can move on. You can talk about it when we get to the end.
Can you expound a little more on this .3 percent, .3 mill increase to recover?
So what I took was, there was five, there was approximately $5 million in new improvements on the valuation sheet that we got from the county. They said $5 million of this is new improvements. So that means.
Is that new construction or?
Could be. Or it could be the added value because somebody had added on a garage or added on a, to their house or anything, a new improvement to the, any property in the city. And so what I then calculated was if we use the revenue neutral rate on just that value, that, that property tax would be about $158,000, which equates to about .3 mill rate over the total assessed valuation. But as Mike mentioned, that .3 doesn't go to those new improvements. It goes to everybody. And then we would collect about $158,000 more than what we would under the revenue neutral rate. So you're not targeting that particular classification. You just can't do that. Everything has to be equal.
It, it would be allowing our property tax revenue to grow in an amount equal to the value of that new construction.
Right.
But there's not a way to dial it in to just that new construction.
Right, right.
So the more new construction we have, if we stay revenue neutral, existing constructions, homes, their taxes should go down?
If they didn't change in value. That's correct. As the values go up and we build more and more and more and our rate would go down because our revenue has to stay the same, ideally, if your property didn't change, your, your tax would go down. But that doesn't happen either. Everybody's goes up and down and.
Mine changed just a little bit.
Right, right.
But the ability of the city to have a fire department fully staffed to come to your house, if it catches on fire, it goes down because our budget gets squeezed every year by the amount of inflation or increase in services we provide.
And they're trying to go to all those different houses that were now built.
I mean, you know, you look at what they say is a person's single biggest asset, it's a house. Why? Because you planned to sell it for more than you bought it. So you're building up equity. And cities, you know, years ago, we were saying we needed to increase our revenue. How we were going to do it, increase the valuation. And now we've increased the valuation and that gain's been taken away by this. I mean, I just think it's an evil thing.
Yeah, I struggled grasping this last year and I had to really go over it.
The, one variable that's different than it's been in the past is sales tax revenue. Sales tax revenue is growing significantly compared to years past, which is what's allowed us to bring forward the budget that we have with a revenue neutral rate.
Well, in my opinion, and I guess I've said this, expressed this before, that revenue neutral is really a bad policy concept for us to embrace, in my opinion. I mean, it's the eastern part of the state telling us to not do anything with taxes, but they have the advantage of the sales taxes in Johnson County and Wichita and Topeka. So I don't see where the western side of the state gets any compensating factor for inflation if they follow that guide. And if you don't have sales tax to compensate, then you're really got your back up against the wall. When I look at our trend, you know, we've trended between 25 and 30. I just think revenue neutral is a, a bad policy place to go. Reducing the, the mill levy makes a lot of sense to me. I think there's a lot of confusion out there about what net revenue neutral is. If you ask anybody, they couldn't explain it to you. But if you, as I as a commissioner can tell them, I reduced the mill levy one mill this year, that wouldn't be revenue neutral. You wouldn't be going down that policy avenue. You would be getting a little more extra revenue to, to compensate for the loss we might have. And, yeah, if you've got a great argument then, to tell the taxpayers that, and we'd be headed towards more of the median where we've been between 25 and 30 all this time. So I, I think some middle ground is, is the best policy, in my opinion, and not embrace the revenue neutral. Just my opinion on it. And I think we're probably going to hear about a lot of other expenses with salaries and commission pay and health insurance and staffing increases and medical issues that all make me nervous. I just don't believe we can count on sales taxes, at least not forever. You might get a year or two, but everything changes.
Not to jump to the conclusion, but there is, at the moment, there is net revenue in excess of expenditures, but what we certainly have done is funded either the Magnolia Road projects that you indicated were priorities for you. If we had revenue, we could, that just is less debt that we'd have to issue to do those projects. I'm not going to say we could pay cash for those projects, but if, if all else fails and we're looking for something to use those funds on, those are the two things that were, came out of your strategic planning at the top of your list that are not funded in, in what we're bringing you.
I'm just afraid revenue neutral becomes a state of mind and I just think we ought to stay away from that concept myself.
Mr., Mr. Linkwitz?
I can tell I have a lot kind of kicking around in my, my mind right now. I guess I should start with, you know, obviously as a rental property owner, property tax and I are, are not necessarily friends, but I also understand that our constituency voted us in to look after the interests of the city. to look after the interest of the city as a whole. And I try and look at things through that lens when I sit behind the dais. The cost of equipment, materials, labor, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's an ongoing conversation, and I keep looking at that middle ground. And we're, that middle ground, we're still lowering taxes essentially, but we're not cutting ourselves off in these. I think that midpoint, the business side of me doesn't like it, but the commissioner's side thinks that's the way to go.
I know, I know going into this, I was really hoping we could have a year where we were kind of revenue neutral, knowing that sales taxes had, had gone up substantially. But a lot of that, again, has been eaten up by the pay plan, by the cost of material and goods, as, as Commissioner Linkwitz said, due to inflation. We do have some, some good reserves right now. But again, if you don't watch it, you start eating into those, and we do have some expenses. I would, I guess I could live with like the midpoint that you're talking about. I still think we're bal, you know, it's a balancing act. I, I'm still concerned about will sales tax go up six percent? Again, so we're, we're projecting that, but has some of our sales tax increase been due to inflation? And will some of that, maybe, we may not hit that six percent, which'll impact our budget also. So I could probably go with the midpoint, I guess, if that's kind of where the commission's leading.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that. You could have argued me farther down, actually. Twenty nine, five, I think's a safe place to be. I have a lot easier time explaining to people that I lowered their mil levy than I do explaining revenue neutral concepts to them.
I think I would prefer revenue neutral, but I do like this point three that you brought up. And, you know, at this time last year, we, as inflation was out of control, we didn't know where it was going. But I, it's, it's settling down, you know. For, for the most part, there's some areas that's still off the charts, but it's settling down. And I looked at the, the general fund reserves. Where are we at on that? Is it eighteen million?
I think it's twenty eight.
Twenty eight. I knew there was an eight in there. That's a, that's a pretty good reserve.
Well, to the point on inflation, after listening to the Fed's Governor Powell talk last week in that, in the meeting they had, and we have seen the nine percent inflation come down to four and a half, but what they, and that's mostly food and fuel. What they're calling the continuing inflation is still at four and a half, and they're not predicting that, and their target is two. They don't see themselves getting to that, or the country getting to that until 2026. And I think they feel that even by the end of the year, we'll still be at four. So it's going to come down real slow. It's going to be a persistent problem for you future commissioners to consider. So I'm just, I'm a go cautious kind of guy.
And, yeah, it's a problem for the city budget, but it's a problem for every citizen of the city.
And what, seventy percent of our budget's salaries, and we have what I consider wage inflation, and wage inflation doesn't go away. And, and that's, you know, you'll have, you can have materials and other things come down, but once you've, you know, we've made that adjustment to wages, those don't come down unless anybody out here is volunteering. I didn't think so. So, but once you do, once you have that wage inflation, that, that continues forever. So it doesn't come down like eggs and beef and stuff at the grocery store, so.
Our economy right now is blessing us with this extra fund balance. I'd rather, you know, while we're hot, take the money, pay for the things that we know we need to do. I mean, if, if the economy cools off, you know, we've set the bar here that we're going to have to generate that money in the future from someplace or cut a whole lot of services. You know, we buy things so that they appreciate. I mean, we've been trying to grow our property value so that we get more revenue. So we become less dependent on sales tax. I think a lot of, you know, that boost has moved, had a lot of construction, a lot of people in town building. At some point, well, I hope we don't stop building things. I see that leveling, leveling off. And if we have big projects that we know we need to do, I mean, if the money's sitting there, I'd hate to see it go by. And we're not taking money that we would not have generated ten years ago anyway. We're, we're just not giving it back. I mean, it's like, you know, again, buying a house and saying, well, okay, I don't want the property value to go up any. I'll just take my chance and sell it at this price three years from now.
So if I were to summarize what I think I heard, I hear one of you above the midpoint, I hear one of you below the midpoint, and I hear three of you somewhere in the middle, maybe not all articulating the same midpoint, but somewhere in the middle. Does that collectively put you near the midpoint?
I'm not going to lose any sleep if it's the midpoint, but I mean, it's, it's, I would, I would like to squeeze as much out of this boon time that we have right now as, as we can.
I, I think I could agree with the midpoint. And to Commissioner Davis's comment about selling the home, making money, there's a lot of people that plan on spending their life and dying in that home, and they're on a fixed income. And they're not out to make money, they're just trying to make ends meet.
I, I just, I mean, my personal opinion is, based on where we are financially, I think midpoint is something we can live with. I think it, we capture some of that, but we're not, you know, we're not getting carried away. I think it-
So for clarity, when we say midpoint, in the upper right box is headed midpoint at twenty nine point six oh two oh, and then there were some references to twenty nine point five and references to a mil less, which would be twenty nine point three four eight. So when we say midpoint, are we saying the midpoint is shown in that upper right box or some other number?
Yeah, but then that still requires a hearing to that.
Yes, yeah, because, yeah, because it's not-
And you, you could, I mean, you can think about it in a week and, and change your mind, but if that's where the consensus is at, we can-
We're going to dial the budget to that number again, and that way, yeah. We're not going to make a final decision on that until the July tenth because we do have to notify by July fifteenth to the county clerk. Either way, we have to, we have to notify them. So at that July tenth meeting, we'll, we'll be making that, that action item. We'll be coming forward to do, to do that. Okay?
Whether you're twenty nine point five or twenty nine point six, it's not a big difference, obviously, so.
Okay, so we'll proceed with the twenty nine point six oh two in the numbers that we bring you forward.
Okay.
Okay, and so the next section, which is the longer section and the more numbers, and this is probably the only time that you'll, well, you might see all these numbers again, but we want to get these in front of you so that if you want the opportunity to look at line item by line item where things are going, you can kind of see that. We have focused on the general fund, obviously, because that's our biggest operating fund. Some of the assumptions that we've taken into account as we've gone through this general fund budget, as Mike said, the property tax we were bringing in at revenue neutral will change that number. Sales tax, we are projecting a six percent increase over the 2023 projection. That comes in at about a million dollars more than what we're projecting to come through in 2023. It's about three and a half million dollars over what we budgeted for 2023. Franchise fees, we're projecting a four percent over the 2023 projection, which is about four hundred thousand dollars over what we're projecting. And I know we talked about the projections earlier in the, in some of these conversations, where we take the historical collection rate at a given point during the year, where we say, okay, historically, we've been at forty percent collection in this, so this leaves us with this amount. So that's kind of, we, it's a very minute calculation. So I'm pretty comfortable with where our projections are going, unless something out of the ordinary would happen in the last six or seven months of the year. Fees and charges that we did have, we are assuming twenty eight percent over the 2023 projection, and that goes back to the housing starts and the, and some of the building permits that we know are going to be coming in with future building into the next year. On the revenues, or on the expenditure side, our-
What does, I'm sorry, what does that come up to? I mean, that looks like a large-
It looks huge, about three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. So that's why I wanted to give you those dollars.
Now, that's not the increase, that's the total, three fifty seven. The increase would be three fifty seven.
Three fifty, yep.
Your franchise fees, is that based on the rates from Evergy and Kansas Gas and the weather conditions?
Yes, yes. Franchise fees come from electric, gas, video, cable, our own. We have a set rate, so the rate won't change, but the influx of usage will change.
And as Evergy talks about increasing the rates, then our franchise fee and that increased rate will-
It'll go right with-
It goes by their revenue, correct, their net revenue. On the expenditure side, our assumptions in these general fund numbers are a four percent COLA and three percent maximum merit for, in the salary section. We did include an increase in salaries to the three incoming commissioners to six hundred dollars a month, as you had mentioned earlier.
And quite a few, if you asked me about that, that we didn't, you didn't decide to do that. We built that in just because it was in the discussion. It's still a policy decision that you, as a governing body, would have to make.
Just because we adopt it doesn't mean it's happening. You would have to adopt that policy separately.
I'm still not in favor of that. That's three hundred, to be another thirty six hundred dollars a year times five. I'd rather dedicate money like that to other projects that we have or even training for commissioners going to National League of Cities or Kansas League of Cities programs. But I think the money's better spent taking care of some of our housekeeping items, not giving to commissioners. Just had, put that opinion out there.
Okay.
But if we do have new commissioners that are stretched to the, financially, that might be a real benefit to, I don't think you get that.
I don't, in my opinion, I don't see that as being an obstacle to someone wanting to serve their city, so.
Well, I don't want to bog you down in that policy decision at this point, but if you, if you feel strongly enough, you could certainly tell us to strike that from the budget. But this, this allows that-
It's ten thousand eight hundred dollars in this budget, in this particular budget. And to your point, if you choose not to approve that policy later, those dollars then could be used for training or something like that in that budget dollar. But we wouldn't have them if we didn't put them in there for that. Health insurance, we've been talking about this for a while. We have not determined that. We do have, if you looked through the numbers, you, you probably did see that there's some increases in there, but those were strictly by a, a function of how we budgeted vacancies and things like that. We didn't do an intentional cross-the-board increase or anything like that yet.
So if I could jump in on that one, and I'll try not to bog us down too much. Have had multiple, had, had good conversations with representatives of the hospital, have had multiple conversations with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Our insurance consultant and Natalie Fisher and others have been involved in all those conversations. A few takeaways, both the hospital and Blue Cross Blue Shield confirm that their conversations are directed at the rates applicable to the hospital, not their ancillary, comm care, urgent care, some of their other facilities. So as we looked at, you know, total expenses paid in 2022 and then tried to project that out, we were taking everything that we knew to be Slade or Regional affiliate of any kind. So that kind of decreases that universe. There, no one has indicated any specifics about where the negotiations are at. They're very mindful that it's an ongoing negotiation, they can't disclose that. But there seems to be consensus that it will not be a full catch-up, two hundred and seventeen percent increase to get to storm out bail rates. It'll be considerably less than that. Our insurance consultant has had the opportunity to look at some renewal rates at a statewide level that Blue Cross Blue Shield has done recently. It gives him a sense of kind of what the market's doing. He's had some conversations with them. So his, his projections, you have to take into account our experience, increases in medical costs, increases in prescription costs, and then this is a new variable, increases in the negotiated rate directly between the hospital and Blue Cross Blue Shield. But he essentially estimated a fifteen percent increase with some other numbers for prescription. And we've already, just by nature of applying health insurance costs to all of our vacancies and, and some of the assumptions we've made, we've got some capacity built in there. That's a long way of saying, and my initial fear, our collective fear with our consultant was we could be talking about one point nine million. At this point, given everything that we're hearing, I think we're in the two fifty or less range. So I think it's, now, what I don't know is whether this will become the new normal for annual increases over the next few years until they get-
So looking at this, there, you have not built in that increase into this budget. I think we should.
Not directly.
Well, part of the reason we didn't is that conversation I described happened on Friday of last week. We're still trying to kind of get the dust to settle a little bit. So we've not directly built that in, but now that we're starting to get some clarity about that, we can compare it to what we have built in and kind of quantify what we think that difference is. But my main point is, all the conversations we've had are encouraging that it's not going to be nearly as significant as we might have first thought.
So basically, what you're saying, if people stay out of the hospital, there shouldn't be a big change.
Well, I do think there will be an increase, an agreed-upon increase in rates that Blue Cross Blue Shield pays Slade or Regional, and because we're self-insured, that comes directly through to us. It's not a premium that we pay Blue Cross and they have to figure out how to make it work. They are our third-party administrator, they send the bills directly to us to be paid. So I think there will be an increase. I don't think it'll be nearly as significant as we might have first thought, and I think we've already got some capacity in the budget, and we're kind of, to the best of our ability, we're refining that number. Unfortunately, Blue Cross Blue Shield and the hospital won't, it doesn't appear likely to me that they'll have their negotiations completed any sooner than we're finalizing our budget, so we won't have hard numbers.
We need to put a placeholder number in there. I, I guess it's what's that old saying, I plan for the worst and hope for the best just to be on the, I mean, for budgeting purposes, I'd rather-
That is our intention. We're trying, we're trying to make an educated guess on what that placeholder number should be. And so we'll be bringing that forward, but I don't think it's nearly, I don't think it's that two million dollar hit that we might have feared.
I do recall the study session where I discussed the city's comprehensive property and casualty, and that didn't quite come out where the discussion began, so.
Right.
So we do have those numbers from him. He's, Bob's done some estimates on what he, where he thinks those premiums will lie and where he thinks those expenses will lie for 2024. But since Friday to today, we just haven't gotten them in this number. So we're working through those and compared to what we actually do have in the number to see if there's a huge change, and then what percentage of that is the city's portion, what is outside entities' portion, and wherein the funds those fall. Because it does split, those four hundred and whatever employees do fall within multiple funds. So there will be some slight changes within some of these fund numbers, but not-
And, and that's the good thing about having that general reserve balance that we have. If we miss it, certain, you know, when we had a seven million dollar general reserve balance, that-
And I'm more concerned about the health insurance fund getting that right because it doesn't have the twenty million dollar, you know, we have that cushion, but not, it's not huge.
Right, but as you know, we, we also set a health insurance fund balance policy. We take an annual look at that, and we are just a little over the estimated top end. So we do have, I, I think we're going to do our best to have an accurate estimate as part of the budget. Then we have the health insurance fund balance to rely upon, and then we have the general fund balance.
And you can transfer that, that health insurance out of the general fund, though, can't you also? If that was a shortage?
From the general fund to the health insurance fund? We could raise the premium through that. If we wanted to do a transfer, we would need to budget that, but we could certainly do it through a process.
We could, that's what I'm saying, we have that ability.
One additional complicator is we have outside agencies, entities that participate in our health insurance plan. So a transfer like that could be subsidizing them. So we, we'd have to get into the details of that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so back to this, then the other, the other assumption that we have in here, and just for information, is that the non-personnel expenses in this are about fourteen point six percent, an increase of, over the 2023 budget.
And these general fund, all of these assumptions include the new cost initiatives and additional staff?
Yes, yes, yes. So within those numbers, within these numbers that we've got you, the next slide kind of gives you what additional staffing we've recommended. There were many more requests, obviously. These are the ones that are being recommended.
It may look like we didn't turn any down, but we actually did.
We did.
We parsed through that.
And, and they're all over the place as far as funds go. But for the most part, the top section, anywhere down to the public works, is all in the general fund. Some of these are actually new positions, like the deputy director for development services. Some of them are additional, like another building inspector. So as we- So as we went through these, we, you know, Mike and, and the team had to just kind of look at what, what we felt what those needs were. So if there's any questions about this particular, but these are included in the numbers we have provided you.
So to let the public beware, make sure I'm thinking of this correctly, these are new positions to be added. These aren't positions that need to be filled, because we have numerous positions, just so everybody out there understands. We have numerous positions, because this makes it look like, oh, we're, on our, please, we must be fully staffed. That's what I don't want people to think, that this is just what we need to fill. These are new.
No, these are additional positions in it to extend our authorized positions.
Just want to make sure.
We have many vacancies that we still need to fill, so. And most of these are related to, to new initiatives that, that you'll see on the next page. So I wanted to just point out some of the larger, newer initiatives that we've, we have in these budget numbers. For example, discovery disaster recovery program through CT, getting into Microsoft three sixty-five, licensing software, re-establishing programming for special populations and senior programs, red dot, I know it's optics now, not lasers for the police department, providing some funding for officer wellness, some additional lessons plate readings, wayfinding, renewal and replacement of our current wayfinding, internal wayfinding signs, and tree trimming equipment, based on the, the program that we talked about about two years ago, to do, to get more on top of city tree trimming. This is just, it's not an inclusive list, but it is a list of some of the major ones, especially those that we felt like were included in your strategic planning. We wanted to make sure that you, you saw that those were included in there. So then the next many, many pages are department details. And I certainly won't go through every one of these, because I, I've tried to highlight some of the areas. But I would certainly, if you had questions on any of these, one of the questions I know that came up, just from your conversations with Mike, was the increase for Salina Grace is fifteen thousand. Their total request was seventy-five thousand. It was sixty thousand previously. The other number that's included in that other agency contract number is the Salina Band, which we support at twenty thousand dollars a year, and the Salina Tennis Alliance, which we have supported at forty thousand dollars a year, so that makes up that number.
And, and I know, like, we had presentation from OCCK, but I don't think we ever said.
We have not, and that will come with issues and options. That'll be in issues and options, which is kind of the last step in the process. It'll be, we have it scheduled for July seventeen.
So the budget was based on their request, not on our approval, okay?
That's correct. That's correct. And once we get that, that decision point from you, all of the, the funding for outside agencies that aren't contractual, which like the Salina Chamber is a contractual, it's a three percent or whatever. So OCCK, SDI, those will all come back to you for decision points and issues and options. The personnel increases will come back to you as a decision point, a final decision point. And just a few others, property tax, I think, is in there. There's about half a dozen of those final decision points that you'll make before the final budget. But yes, to answer your question, what they requested is in these numbers. Okay? But that doesn't mean they're approved.
Okay, thank you.
So any questions through the, the general fund? I will point out, the city manager budget was kind of reorganized. Media was taken out of there, CPI was taken out of there. So there's, looks like it's dropping out of the world, but that's why we kind of transferred some of that to CT and some of that to media. Organizationally, you'll see that media is now going to go under CT, but financially, they'll have their own. So we can track those costs as we compare those to what we were paying before. Some of the other highlighted items, you'll see increases in CT, and that's another function of, we reorged, we're adding some addition, you know, we're reorging their staff, we're giving them some additional responsibilities as far as paying for all of the phone contracts and things like that. So some of those things will increase theirs, and they're trying to get a handle on everybody's software and everybody's maintenance and all those things.
We're trying to consolidate oversight of all of that under CT, where it's been farmed out across departments. And we're seeing inconsistencies, just someone has a favorable rate and then someone else isn't aware of it, so.
I feel like a lot of that, 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 some of these bigger expenses is all catch-up that we really needed to do sometime. And the landscape there, the CT world is sure changing.
Very much so, very much so.
Don't get us started on Office three sixty-five, but it's, from a compatibility standpoint, we're kind of, at the end of life, it's time that we've got to make the switch to have software work like we want it to.
So old Office three sixty-five may be going away. It's fitting, right? Might be a generation behind.
So like I said, I tried to, and you'll see there was a lot more of those little clouds at the beginning of the presentation. I got a little stretched for time. So if you saw anything else in this, in this section that you saw that just stuck out to you and you had questions, like I said, that's why I brought these people behind me. I'd be glad to answer those questions.
How many pages are you going down here?
I am going to slide.
Jumping to twenty-five.
Forty-eight. So up to forty-eight is the detail for every department, division within the general fund. Then what I did was I provided you the overall summary of what's happening to that fund with these numbers in it. So on slide forty-eight, you can see that we're estimating, we're budgeting a total revenue of fifty-two million, a little over fifty-two million in the general fund. We're estimating expenditures of about fifty-point-seven million in the general fund, which leaves us about a one-point-four million dollar net income. That number will change based on some of the evaluation we do of the, of the health insurance. But that's kind of where we are, which is roughly about a nine percent increase over where we think we'll end up at the end of 2023, and about an eighteen percent increase over the actual expenditures of 2022. And I didn't really mention this, but in budgeting, it's very hard to compare to last year or to this year, because it hasn't really happened. So what we assumed this year may be totally different. So we try to go back to two years ago, but then you have to remember that you're, that's a two-year increase, so that would be nine percent a year. And when you look at what we've done with salaries, that number gets eaten up pretty quickly. A seven percent increase in salaries is, is part of that.
Just sort of backing up, but.
Sure.
Could you talk about, there's a lot of overtimes in a lot of places. Is there any solution to that besides the regu, regular hiring or?
There have been, there have been some, some initiatives, for example, in the police department, when they went to four-ten-hour days, that was extremely helpful in their overtime costs. Now that the vacancies are a lot higher, we're seeing that number go back up. But we are constantly during the budget process, talking to department heads and looking at department heads and saying, okay, where's that kind of break point of overtime compared to hiring more people? Does it help? Does it not help? And things like that. There are just some departments you can't avoid it. You know, when you call out people on a, on a utility break at midnight, you just can't avoid it.
Fire department's the other one that we have a lot of conversation. In fact, they've offered up, they think if we could bring on additional firefighters, we could mitigate that overtime expense. And we've had that conversation for quite some time, predating Chief Snyder. And we really just need a little bit more data to, to, for me to have the courage to pull the trigger on that one. But we are having good, productive conversations about the methodology, whether that would work and how we might be able to analyze that, so.
What's causing the overtime? There's a lot, I mean, breaks are not the only thing that cause overtime, especially in some of these public safety initiatives, you know, departments. They're, you know, they have to be, have coverage all the time. So if that person's sick, or if that person's at training, or if that person, wherever they are, they have to cover them. And that could, that could and probably does.
Staffing shortages are making it hard for us to implement some of those strategies.
Yeah.
At the fire department, are we staffed? I don't think we are. Have rovers, any rover?
We are looking at staffing to have the same number on every shift, but we're not over compliment, other than that, that one.
That's what I'm thinking of, is have a couple people who go.
Oh, as rovers? No, I don't.
Go wherever.
Well, and that, that's the conversation I was talking about, was it, what's, what generates the overtime? Would that rover be able to cover it, or is it a training exercise that a rover is not going to be able to address? If we can dial in, you know, the specifics of that a little bit more, I think we can come back to you with a plan.
Any other questions on the general fund? If not, we'll spend the last fifteen minutes, so just looking at some of the other funds, because we do budget twenty-some funds. Arts and Humanities Fund, you can see we're budgeting an increase of about four percent over the 2023 budget, about twenty-nine thousand. The total on there, the revenue, we're estimating one point, one million sixty-three thousand, expenses of one million sixty-one thousand for about a two-thousand-dollar net income on, on slide fifty-one. And please stop me on any of these. Sales tax capital fund, that's another one that we have, we, we are projecting a lot more revenue. The decrease in that number comes from, if you recall, we did a lot of transfers. We did a one, some one-time transfers for, like the River Festival. We took all their money out of there. That was accumulated.
And River Renewal.
Oh, River Renewal, River Festival. Get those confused. And then some of those other reserve funds that we had, that we had accumulated some unspent funding. So those, those have happened in the last couple of years, so those expenses will look large. So what we're down to now is kind of our normal, what we would have transferred to those funds on a normal basis. I will say this number will probably change as we come through with CIP and sub-CIP and how we're addressing those funding needs. A lot of that comes from sales tax, so this number will probably change to kind of increase that and get us onto that program of how we've got that whole CIP and sub-CIP laid out. But it'll still be in a positive format.
When do you anticipate having the second quarter sales tax numbers?
We, second quarter? We have numbers through, what is this, July? We're not in July yet. We have through May.
Kind of two-month lag?
On a two-month lag, so we won't see, we won't see what's actually being spent today until the fall. But we're still in the probable, I think about the eight percent, I don't know if it's right here, increase over last year. We're still increased over last year, even through what we've collected.
I thought you got it quarterly.
No, we get sales tax monthly. We get transient guest tax quarterly. So that, we'll have a little discussion here in a minute about that one. But sales tax, we're still up from last year in that eight-ish percentage range through what we collect, what we got in May, which was from March collection, March retailer collections.
We're going to get a boost starting tomorrow. Fireworks go on sale.
Oh, we might, might. That's part of the whole cycle of sales tax, though. You know, it goes up, it goes down, it, you know, it levels out for a while. Sales Tax Economic Development Fund, this is another one that, there's an increase, but it's an increase for SDI that you will make that decision later. So that number could come down. Their increase was up about twenty thousand dollars from last year, which is included in this number.
While we're on the topic, revenue just covers basic commitment on expenditures. We generally don't build up a balance as if we have funds for a incentive for an economic development prospect. That's something we discussed in strategic planning. That is one of the strategic planning items that is not addressed as part of this budget. We could do that by transfer. We could do that by reallocation of some sales tax funds. But we've just carried forward revenue covering recurring expenses at the moment.
That's correct. BID, they're in, we're, we're increasing their budget on both sides because there are increased fees. The next few are pass-throughs, transit tourism, based on transient guest tax. That number is completely taken out of this fund. You will see a balance here where prior you didn't. That is the balance that we're holding on to for the Bill Burke improvements. That was what we had collected through the end of 2022. I think that number, I have it written down here somewhere, is about four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to date. And that's a decision point we'll make as far as what do we do with that? Do we use it to draw down the debt? Do we use it for something else, whatever, pay it, just hold it to pay off the future debt, whatever? But that three-sixteen is what was in there at the end of 2022, set aside for the Bill Burke project. Special Parks and Recreation, it too is, is the special alcohol fund. So you'll see the next couple of funds have exactly the same revenue. That's because they get, these two get a third of the, of the revenue for special alcohol, special rep, parks. We just budget that they're going to spend what comes in, especially on the alcohol, because that goes in and out to the, the grantees that we've, we've made commitments to. Special Gas Tax Fund, we are budgeting more expenditures than revenue. This is always an estimate. It's, it's an estimate from the state. But our intent has been for the last few years to draw down, spend some money on streets and kind of draw down that fund, because the target fund balance for that is about two-hundred-and-fifty, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So this is not shocking to any of us. It's intentional. The next fund is Neighborhood Parks. This is one of those funds that, as projects present themselves in the right district, then they can use this fund. And I always like to budget enough, so that if a project comes up and they have that money available for that particular district, that they have the budgeted dollars to do that. Any of these that you see that show that they're going to go in the negative fund balance, that'll get adjusted as we submit budgets to the state, because twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-three hasn't happened. So what we've budgeted for 2023 as it comes in an, an actual, we'll estimate what, what that is, so that we won't budget to the state that these are going to be negative. We'll, we'll re-project what 2023 is going to be.
So, and it's minor, but the Neighborhood Park Development Fund, the revenue is a nominal fee that gets paid with building permits. And then the provision is that we have different districts and that's subdivided by district. And it either has to be used within a specified amount of time or returned. And so as we accumulate funds within individual districts, Parks Department identifies eligible expenses to spend that on. As you can see, it's, we're talking forty-five thousand dollars.
Wayfinding signs.
It has to be more park-related than wayfinding, maybe, but we generally try to do playground equipment improvements or park improvements.
Right. Or if we had a new district and needed a new park or something like that, that, that would be part of that, too. T-PAC, we're budgeting a little bit higher, only because we want to be able to cover our budget. Typically, what we found in this one is, we've budgeted a little bit too less, so we've had to come back for revisions. We, we don't, we're tied to them with a contract, so they, they have a contract with us and they're set at a certain targets of, of viability or whatever, however you want to call it. So that's basically how that is driven. We're working with them to try to get their budget lined up with theirs, because currently they're not on the same cycle. They're on, they're on a sixth, a July-first calendar year, not a January-first. So we're still working with them to tie that number down, but we certainly want to budget enough to, to cover what we need to, to support for them. Again, this one won't go negative. There was some spending in 2022 that we budgeted in 2023. That's not going to happen in 2023, so that'll kind of wash itself out when we get there. The shilling one is the same way. We have dollars available. We don't want to tie them to a specific budget. They do have a plan and they do have dollar estimates, cash flow estimates. But if something would happen, that something came up, and we wouldn't want to tie them to that budget. So we kind of just budget them at a, at an astronomical amount, just to make sure we cover them, knowing they have those funds available. Then we get into the, some of the enterprise funds, sanitation fund. We did add the tree trimming equipment for that project into them. They are splitting that with parks, so there's some split salaries and things like that that are coming. They're paying for the equipment out of sanitation, and then they're kind of splitting the, the salary, the personnel. So they're showing a six percent increase over the 2023 budget of about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. They're showing, our budget for them is, is about a ninety-seven thousand dollar net loss, which it's real hard to, to estimate what fees and charges will be, but that is based on the, the increase that they are project, they are proposing in the comprehensive fee schedule, which we'll see in a couple of weeks. Their target there, too, is five hundred thousand, so that, that drawing that down is not something that would, would be shocking for us at this point. Solid Waste Fund might have shocked you a little bit, but I want to point out, we are budgeting, and we've talked about this for many, many years, is trying to get that fund balance out of that fund and into a capital reserve fund. So in this budget cycle, we are budgeting for a six-million-dollar transfer into their capital reserve fund, and that's why it looks like their spending's going up so much. Obviously, if that isn't the right number at the end of the year, what we'll look at at the end of 2023 is we'll look at what their fund balance ends up being, because they have had some unusual stuff happening in 2023. And we'll just project what that number should be, to keep them above their fund, their target fund balance and operating, but to get some of that out of there. So if it ends up being five million, it's five million. But as long as we budget for an amount that we, we think it might be, we can always go lower than that. So that takes us to the solid waste, and that's why it looks like it's having. So that takes us to the solid waste, and that's why it looks like it's having just such a negative net income, is that $6 million. And that does, it looks like it's going way below target fund balance, which is 500,000. But that, like I said, will all be adjusted as we get to that, the point of making that transfer into the capital fund. Golf Fund, their projections, they're not, they're only, they're actually trying to wean down a little bit, so their projections are coming below the 2023 budget by about 2%, leaving them about a $22,000 net income and keeping them really close to their $100,000 target fund balance.
And in the interest of full disclosure, Golf Fund perennially struggles as their revenue and expenditures fluctuate, and this is really kind of focused on operational. Their, their bigger ticket items, equipment, irrigation, are funded outside of the, the revenue of the operations as an enterprise fund. So don't wanna leave anyone with the impression that it's a break-even operation, because it's not.
Waste, and there, there again, that is, any of these funds, if they would go below, below zero in a fund balance, the general fund would have to come in and support them, so we, we would have to be prepared to do that. The Golf Fund, the Central Garage Fund are probably the only two that are that tight, because they are very tight businesses that, that we've had to do that with in the past. Waste Water Fund, I'm not gonna go through any of that detail unless you have questions. This is the, this is one of those funds that we struggle to get done on some of our projects, but Martha and her team have really been working hard and, and trying to say, we're only gonna budget for what we think we can actually get done. So they've been very thoughtful in how they're doing this to make sure that what they're budgeting is things that they can actually complete.
By the time you do equipment repair, replacement, and maintenance, and then our ongoing system improvements, that's quite a bit of scope of work to get out the door. As you know, we've been doing $2 million a year in, in facility replacement, and that ebbs and flows by when you can get design bid and out to construction, but we continue to focus on that.
Are the upgrades we approved earlier this year underway?
Yes. The, Martha, the question is, the upgrades that were approved previous, earlier in the year, what the status of those are, whether they're underway yet?
Or the water mains?
Yes.
No, the sewage treatment.
Oh, sewage, I thought you were talking water.
Yeah. The sewer plant?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, is that the right answer? Yeah, I do, too.
The big one?
The big one, the, the 41.5 million?
Yes.
We are underway, we started construction in April. And was out there last week for a meeting. We're pouring new wells in the Aeration Basins and digging a hole for a final clarifier and see what else was going on. Starting to work on, all, all the shop drawings and the equipment has been, prices are coming in, and we're comparing those to what was in our original budget. So far, things are coming together pretty well, so we are well underway on the big one.
Good, thank you.
We're Comp Fund, we are, that, that is what it is. That's one that we might have to talk about, because we have a policy on that balance, how we adjust that revenue, and, and that revenue comes directly from other funds, but it's not a huge dollar amount to adjust on the other funds. So that's something we might have to look at and do a little bit more digging on. The next one is the Health Fund, and we talked about that quite a bit earlier. We currently have budgeted $8.3 million in expenditure, expenditures. That number is high compared to what the numbers are we're seeing from Bob, but we have to tie out where those revenues are coming from and how that affects the other funds to make sure that those numbers are gonna be adequate and at the right level for where we should be to maintain that fund. Last fund is the Central Garage, oh, it's not the last. Last fund I have here is the Central Garage Fund, we've talked about the Debt Service Fund a little bit. They're budgeting a 2% increase over 2023 budget, 10% over 2022 budget with a, and this is one we're, we're really have, we're really looking at to make sure that we're capturing everything as it is at a, a net loss of 159. So we're working with them to make sure that we have everything in the right place, and, and this is appropriate for their needs. They've provided us the expenditure requests, we've gotta tie down some of the revenues and how that gets transferred to other people. And the last one is the Debt Service Fund, and that, we talked about that a little bit, the property tax revenues and all the sources of that revenue, and then the cost of those payments for those bonds. The last section of the PowerPoint is, we provided with you the strategic planning list that you had provided for us, and we just wanted to let you know which of these we had incorporated in this budget, which ones are still outstanding. So that you had an opportunity to have the discussion and let us know if there's something you want us to plug into this. Mike might have a little bit more to talk about this, if there's specific items that Mike wants to bring forward. But at least you can see which ones we intentionally included or have not been included in this, in this particular budget.
So if you focus on the third column from the left entitled Incorporated Into Budget Plans, maybe that should have a question mark on after that. Each one of those, we provided the status of, yes, it, it has been incorporated in some way. There's a few there that you'll see that say reserve balance slash 2025. In particular, the Magnolia Street work, that's not something that we would have designed and out to bid in 2024, but we can certainly get started. And so that could be something that's funded out of reserve. We talked a little bit earlier, if you, if you do anything with the mill rate, that might generate some funds to be applied there as well. And then a handful of these are not applicable in that they're not necessarily financial items as much as policy items. For example, and notified, automated notifications of water usages and, and just different policy decisions that we were making. As I mentioned earlier, the Economic Development Fund balance is not something that we've budgeted as part of what we presented to you at the moment. With our general fund reserve balances, we could certainly make a transfer in, in response to an economic development project, rather than just accumulated balance to be held in that fund. But I guess my big takeaway for you is the vast majority of your high priority consensus items are accounted for as part of this, this budgeting. If anything, implementation may be a little bit of a challenge on some of this stuff, staff getting everything done and out the door. But the things that are not accounted for that might be newsworthy are those Magnolia items and some just different staffing decisions, some policy implementation that we probably could do throughout the year anyway, pre-sentence evaluation in municipal court as an example. But really wanted to share this with you so that you could kind of revisit your, what you identified as high priority items of consensus of the governing body and, and show you how much progress we're making on that.
Has there been any activity or update on the DOT funding for the Magnolia projects?
No, not really. The, the request is in, the conversation's going on, but haven't, nothing new to report.
So basically, the last slide is kind of the next steps. Staff still needs to finalize those health insurance cost estimates and have some further discussions about allocations and strategic planning. If you want to give us any direction about the strategic planning priorities, we'll need to talk about if we want to utilize any of those fund, reserve fund balances and get them in this budget. You've given us some direction on the net revenue neutral rates, so we'll implement that into the budget numbers. We'll come back to you with those as far as a final decision. We'll be bringing sub-CIP and CIP, those will be just conversations, we looked at those a little briefly, kind of narrowing down now, we've seen the big project and what are we gonna do next year type thing? And where do you want us to put that all in these budget numbers? How they directly affect this year's, this 2024 budget. Comprehensive fees, we'll bring those requested amendments to you at, on July 10th. And then issues and options will be that final point where you kind of make those final decisions with those few decision points that we mentioned earlier. And then if you have any questions or direction, are there any of those things that you can think of in strategic planning or any questions that you've thought of as we've talked that we can answer in general?
Anybody, any other question coming? Not, I'd like to thank Ms. Pack and your staff for, again, all the work, the budgeting. I know it's a lot of work, but I think we get some really good information and helps us to make some educated decisions, so appreciate that.
If you have questions come up, line item by line item, feel free to forward them to me, and, and we'll certainly be happy to try to dive in. We did give you a lot of information, gave you a lot of comparisons, so you can see what each individual line item is doing. But it'd be perfectly understandable if additional questions arise as you had a little bit more time to think about it.
Okay, we will adjourn and be back here at 4 o'clock for our regular scheduled meeting. Thank you.
And I was walking and I went to take a step, my dad grabbed me by the back of my hand.
Okay, it is now four o'clock and we will call the June 26, 2023 Salina City Commission Meeting to Order. I would first ask staff for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, may we have roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Would those who are able please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards and proclamations or items scheduled for a certain time, so that will lead us to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of June 12, 2023. Item 5.2, award the bid for project number 23008, 2023, street markings to Heartland Traffic Services of Kansas City, Kansas, in the amount of $40,944.40 with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $42,991.62 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Heartland Traffic Services of Kansas City, Kansas, upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. And item 5.3, award the bid for project number 23018, 2023, curb and gutter repairs to Davis Concrete Construction of Salina in the amount of $95,592.63 with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $100,372.26 and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Davis Concrete Construction of Salina upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Okay, here's an item and commissioner would like to have a poll for consent agenda? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda?
Take it.
We have a motion, a second, to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will lead us to administration, item 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve resolution number 23-8134, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Travelers for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Schussler, the city's risk manager, and I'm here to discuss resolution number 238134, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Travelers for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance program. So annually, the city purchases insurance to cover things like our buildings, our equipment, also to pay for law enforcement liability, cyber liability, and the current insurance that we have in place is set to expire on June 30th, so that's why we're here, to discuss the renewal. We did meet, if you recall, we met back in March at a study session, and I brought Mark Skidmore, the president of Iron Insurance Partners, our local broker, and James Charlesworth with Charlesworth Consulting, and they presented the state of the marketplace at the time. One of the many things that we discussed was property and liability coverage concerns and their volatility. I won't go into those details at this point since we've already discussed those, but nothing's really changed in that regard. Inflation is still impacting values and product availability and labor rates, and there's been an increase in liability claims nationwide. So at that time, at the study session, Travelers had indicated that they were looking at a possible 8% overall rate increase, which they did end up following through with. At the bottom of your first page of the report is actually a comparison of the expiring year's premium line of coverage, by line of coverage, and how it compares to their current proposal for 2023. If you notice at the bottom line that Travelers took an overall 18% premium increase, which equates to an increase of $106,374. The, if you notice, if you look along to the right side under the percentage change column, you'll notice that the property and the liability lines experienced the larger increases, which was not a surprise. Even though we expected that 8% rate increase that they had warned us about, the exposure increases that they calculated on the city's property far exceeded what we had anticipated. So Travelers actually, if you notice at the top of that second page, they took a 14% increase in values of several of our higher valued buildings. They basically have software that they can perform a replacement cost estimate, and they adjusted those particular buildings according to that. So there's where you're seeing, that's what's basically contributing to the biggest portion of the property increase that we're seeing for this renewal. The attachment that came with this report, the summary of insurance, I'm not going to go through that, that's an extensive document by line of coverage and broken down with deductibles and things like that, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to review that. But I do just want to point out a few things that Travelers specifically changed this year. If you recall back in 2020, they mandated a 1% building and business, personal property deductible for wind and hail damage with a minimum $50,000. They've changed that this year, they left the 1%, but they increased the 50,000 minimum to 100,000. One of the other things that they did is they removed the anaerobic digesters that are at the wastewater treatment plant, there are six of those, they've removed them from the blanket replacement cost portion of the insurance policy, and they've moved them to actual cash value. And then the last thing that I wanted to point out is that we previously had an agreed value for Memorial Hall, and they've removed it from that and also placed that under actual cash value in case there's a loss. So at the study session that we had in March, you had directed staff and Iron Insurance Partners and Charlesworth Consulting to basically renew with Travelers, and even though you had done that, Iron Insurance Partners wanted to do their due diligence, and they put some feelers out to some carriers that they know do business with public sectors in the market. They just kind of wanted to test the market and see what might pop up and be available. At the bottom of page two, unfortunately, you can see all five of the companies that they reached out to all declined to quote the city, and they had various reasons. We were either too big or too small, which we've talked about that previously, that's kind of where we fall, right, kind of in the middle. And one of the companies actually don't write public entities anymore, so that's of course why they would deny that or decline to quote. So we are basically in our seventh year of a hard market, and unfortunately, it's driving rates and premiums, and we're seeing that all over. I understand that we're one of the lucky ones, I think, with the rates and the premium increase that we're seeing. It could be much worse, I've heard of much worse, so we can talk about that later if you'd like. But while coverage and conditions and costs are important, so are the services that are provided, and we've done business with Travelers for over 20 years, and they've proven they have a track record of being very competitive in their pricing, and they also have an exceptional claims management department that I work with on a regular basis, so that's incredibly helpful. And then also they have a comprehensive online resource and partnerships with their clients, so we definitely take available, you know, take opportunity of all those availabilities to us, so, and that matters a lot, that's important. So the fiscal note on this, we budgeted $682,764 for our insurance renewal for 2023, and unfortunately, we came in a little bit short of that. We were actually short, the renewal, the proposal from Travelers, is $697,290, and that difference of $14,526 will be paid from the general fund. So staffs identified the following options for the commissioners' consideration. You can either approve resolution number 238134, you could approve resolution number 238134 with amendments as to the city commission deems appropriate, or you could vote to deny resolution number 238134, resulting in no property casualty insurance protection for potential losses. And staff recommends option one. I've talked about Mark and James today, and they are once again here, so if you have any questions that I can't answer, I'm sure they'd be happy to get up and address those.
Okay, I'll start to my left, Annie.
This is just more from my perspective, but when you say we're in seven years of a hard market, what's that mean? Are we just in the seventh year and it's been hard for seven years? Or give me some perspective about that. I get COVID and inflation, but does it start with the housing situation?
I'll let one of the guys come up, one of the experts come up.
James Charlesworth, Charlesworth Consulting, thank you for the question. It's hard to predict how long a hard market's going to last. We are in the seventh year, and frankly, I don't see it end in sight, within the next year or two at least. The storms that rolled through the southern part of the country yesterday didn't help. Northern Texas is getting hit constantly, and these catastrophic events, I think, if I remember correctly, there were 16 to 18 billion dollar events last year, and that's just, these insurance companies aren't, they're here to make money, and they're just not making any money. And so there are rising prices, and the number of insurers, cities are so complex, it's, there's just nobody to go to. So we're hopeful, if we can get through this hurricane season, that next year we'll see a little bit of calming. You'll hear rate versus premium a lot, and, you know, an 8% rate increase is a good average increase, but values are going up. I think overall, our property values went up 13.3%. Your budgeted general, general fund budget went up 2.5%, 2.3%, 2.5%, you know, all those things kind of add on to the rate. So yeah, rates are, this hard market, I just don't see an end anytime soon, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
No question.
My concern is, where does it leave us if Travelers should bow out?
You had to say that out loud.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you, that was my question, maybe for next year.
We would, we would find a solution, it might be pooling, it might be taking on a lot more risk than we are already taking, which is a lot. We would find a solution, but it would be, it'd be very difficult. If Travelers bowed out, there's somebody else would jump in to fill that void, but it would cost a lot more money.
Okay, and the $100,000 wind and hail deductible, that's plus 1% of the claim?
It's the minimum of 1% per building, or a minimum of 100,000 per occurrence. So, so yeah, if it was just one building, it's going to be $100,000 deductible unless it's a very expensive building.
If we have multiple buildings, it's the 100,000.
Well, 100,000's the minimum. They will take that 1% by the value of each of the buildings affected, and they'll calculate that out, and that'll be our deductible. So it could be considerably more than 100,000 dollars.
Wasn't there also some discussion about what per occurrence meant, and whether one storm event and multiple buildings?
Yeah, one storm event would be one occurrence.
Okay.
If it's, yeah, for wind and hail, it's going to happen quickly, earthquake, and there's like a 72-hour thing there, but for, it'll be just one quick occurrence that flows through the city.
Okay, thank you.
And we did look, if you recall, last year, year before last, we both looked at what we call deductible buy downs, deductible buyback policies, Mark and his team did, and it's just not cost efficient to buy down that risk.
And do we still have, I can't remember what you called it, like backup insurance, secondary insurance? Didn't we have?
For property, or for, we have umbrella coverage for our liability to get our limits up where we need them to be.
I think what he may be talking about, I think the insurance companies also have...
Yeah, they have reinsurance.
They have reinsurance.
And that's what's really driving the hard market, is the reinsurance market is very bad right now.
Right. Ms. Lenkowitz?
No questions, it's just a familiar vein of conversation where everything's going up in price and there's a trickle effect or a ripple effect, everyone looks at it.
If you may, I would like to make one point public, is that most insurance agencies are paid a commission, so when the premiums go up, their commissions go up. Mark and his team, they're on a flat fee basis, so there's no incentive to his team to drive prices higher. It's actually better for them to drive them down, but I just wanted to make that public.
Thank you. Yeah, I was a little bit concerned about this, this commissioner Lenkowitz, what happens if we don't have Travelers, and that's something to think about as to what our options are in the future. I'm guessing there's other communities, we're not the only community dealing with this, so I'm sure that there's a lot of others.
Many of my clients are dealing with much worse situations, unfortunately.
I guess misery loves company, it makes us feel good, right?
Travelers has been in this a long time. I don't see any reason they're going anywhere.
Good. So, okay. Any comments or questions from the public?
Norman, Manlos, Salina, the insurance companies are already pulling out of California.
Good thing we're not in California.
We're in California.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Keep up that earthquake insurance.
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of resolution number 23-8134.
We have a motion, a second, to approve resolution number 23-8134. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you for being here. Appreciate all your hard work on this. Okay, that will bring us to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, 2023, general obligation bonds. Item 6.2A, approve resolution number 23-8135, authorizing the offering for public sale of general obligation bonds. Item 6.2B, approve ordinance number 23-11155, authorizing the issuance and delivery of approximately $31,175,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds. And item 6.2C, authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Stiefel Nicholas and Company, Inc., to provide financial advisor services for the city of Salina for the issuance of the 2023 general obligation bonds.
Okay, Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. This is, there's a five-step process in financing projects. This is the final step in projects, which is the permanent financing of those projects. This process takes several months to put together, and we have a lot of people in the background that are helping us do that. There's basically three action items today. The first is a resolution, this authorizes us to offer our bonds for sale. It includes putting out an official statement and some of the sale documents that Stiefel Nicholas will help us prepare, and that goes out to buyers and things of the debt. The second item is an ordinance, which is to be considered on first reading today. It authorizes to actually issue and deliver those bonds to, for general obligation bonds. The second reading of that ordinance is scheduled for July 24th, which will be the day that we actually get the bids for the bonds and we The second project is a special assessment project for Cedar Ridge Addition Phase Two for six, a little over six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That'll be paid back with special assessment levies against property owners over twenty years. That annual debt payment is estimated to be about fifty thousand dollars. Um, I've provided you a lot of data and information in the, in the report about bonding and issuance and where we are those, I won't go over that detail, because we kind of just covered a lot of that in the study session. Um, but basically, we do, we do issue a, a levy of property tax to pay for our debt, um, that covers the leftover debt payments that we have outstanding, after we subtract some other revenue sources that we have, um, available. In addition to the action items to actually issue the debt and to, um, put that, that information out for, uh, action, we do have, uh, based on the rules of the municipal securities we were making board, Stiefel Nicholas is required to enter into an agreement with us to provide the services that they do, and they do a lot of services for us during bond issuance, like I mentioned, the official statement, they put the bids out, they help us read those bids, and they do a lot of that information. Um, and it also, it covers their scope and their fees, and so this is part of this action today, is to approve that agreement with them. Uh, we have attached a draft of that for your, uh, to, to look at that agreement. The cost of issuance will be, um, included in the debt financing, so that three point one seven five will be adjusted as we see the need for those, um, issuance costs. So we have three action items, the four, there's four options that are the same for each of those action items. One is to vote to approve the item, you could amend the item as you see fit, you could, could postpone the item to a specific date and time, or you could vote to deny the item. So with that, we have three, like I said, three resolu, three items. Resolution two-three eight one three five authorizes the offering of, for public sale of general obligation bonds. Ordinance two-three one-one-one-five-five authorizes the actual issuance of the general obligation bonds to fin, to fund the, these two particular projects. And the last one is to authorize the city manager to sign the financial advisory services agreement with Stiefel Nicholas and Company for this particular service. Staff recommends option one on all three items. I do have Dave Artterberry here from Stiefel Nicholas. If you have any questions about bonding or these particular issuances, I'm sure between the two of us, we could be able to answer those.
Okay, I will start to my right. Commissioner Lincoln, any questions?
I'm just curious what kind of interest rates the sale of these bonds are.
Good afternoon, David Artterberry with Stiefel Nicholas. Um, right now, interest rates are, as you can imagine, like most things, higher than they've been, at least in a couple, three years ago. I would estimate that, um, the ten-year borrowing for Budbrook Park, or Bill Burke Park, you'd be talking about something slightly above a three percent interest rate. Um, the twenty-year bonds, you're probably talking about something in the, the mid to upper three percent. So if you average all that out, I'm guessing around three and a half percent or so. But again, that will, that rate will be actually determined and locked in on the bond sale date later in, in July.
And so those will be two separate bond issues, because one's ten and one's twenty?
It's actually gonna, what we'll do is we'll create two separate amortization schedules, one for each project, and then when we sell the bonds, we'll, we'll blend those together, so that we'll just be selling one series of bonds.
And it'll be a blended rate, then?
Yeah, it'll, the, the three and a half will be a blended rate, but each piece will have their own rates, yeah.
So the bonds market, they do sell pretty readily at that rate?
Yeah, the, uh, right now, um, there has actually been not a big supply in the municipal bond market, so even though rates are higher, there still seems to be a pretty robust market and pretty robust number of bidders for, for the bonds, yeah.
Everyone still goes to that safety of the municipalities.
Exactly. And, and the tax exempt feature of the bonds, too, the interest that's paid to investors, the, the investors don't have to pay federal in, or state income taxes on it, so that's also attractive to them.
Well, that's just comforting, I, I was expecting like five or six percent.
No, fortunately, not, not that high, yeah.
No questions? Are, are these able to be prepaid, or do they have?
Yeah, the, the bonds will have, um, a call feature. Um, now investors, they, they, they demand a certain length of call protection, so I believe these bonds, um, I'd have to look, but I'm, I'm thinking that what we'll probably have is an eight-year call feature on them, so the first eight years, they'll be call-protected, and then anytime after that, you could call them without penalty.
Well, the only reason I ask is, we've talked about, we've been collecting from transient guest tax to pay on the, in Bill Burke improvements, and we have already a substantial amount of money built up, so that was why I was asking if that can be used in the future, so.
Yeah, it could be in the future used, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the public on this item? I guess on these three items, I should say, so we need to address each one of these separately. Bring it back to the commission.
Before our first motion, Mayor?
If, if you're, if you're ready to make one.
Mayor, I would move we approve resolution number twenty-three eighty-one thirty-five, authorizing the offer for public sale of general obligation bonds.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty-three dash eight one three five, authorizing the offering for public sale of general obligation bonds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five zero.
Mayor, I move we adopt on first reading ordinance number twenty-three one-one-one-five-five, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to fund the Bill Burke improvements and Cedar Ridge Addition Phase Two projects.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two-three dash one-one-one-five-five, um, on first reading, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to fund the Bill Burke improvements and Cedar Ridge Addition Phase Two projects. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That also passes five zero.
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to sign the financial advisory services agreement with Stiefel Nicholas and Company Incorporated.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, to authorize a city manager to sign the financial advisory services agreement with Stiefel Nicholas and Company, Inc. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item also passes five zero. Thank you very much for being here today. That will lead us to item six point three.
Item six point three, city fuel site system upgrade. Item six point three A, authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with P.B. Hoydale Company, Inc., for replacing the gas and diesel fuel pumps at the city fuel site, replacing the standalone fuel management unit with an integrated FMU, and replacing the computer software that records and reports daily usage, tank levels, and leak test results in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventeen cents, with a five percent contingency for a total price not to exceed one hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. And item six point three B, authorize the city manager to solicit quotes and include a backup emergency power system to the fuel site upgrades in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Mr. Coach.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Jim Coatch, Operations Manager for Public Works. I'm here today with Kena Wallace, he's our shop superintendent, takes care of the central garage, including the, uh, the fueling site. We're here on a couple related items, dealing with our fueling site, which is located over on East Elm Street, um, next to the household hazardous waste facility, just, uh, east of downtown. We're here to request authorization of the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with P.B. Hoydale Incorporated, we'll refer to them as Hoydale from now on, for replacing the gas and diesel fuel pumps, the fuel, at the city's fuel site, replacing the standalone fuel management unit, which is kind of the brains of it, with an integrated fuel management unit, and replacing the computer software that records and reports daily usage, tank levels, leak test results, in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventeen cents, with a five percent contingency of five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, for a total price not to exceed one hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. And a related, related item, we'd like to consider authorizing the city manager to solicit quotes and include, and include a backup emergency power system, generator and transfer switch, to the fuel site upgrades in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And we've got, um, pretty extensive history on the fuel site, the, the fuel site has been owned and operated by the city for several years. It, it is in operation twenty-four hours a day, and, uh, pumps anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred gallons per day of, of either unleaded or diesel. Uh, software that, um, we use to manage those pumps have been problematic in the past. It's outdated software, basically a dial-up modem. Um, because it's proprietary software, um, we've experienced quite a, quite a problem with it, uh, working within our network, um, communicating through the firewall and, um, all of those kinds of things, that the two didn't play nice together, so we had a, had to have our CT folks involved, just to get them to talk. And now the, the actual FMU is outdated enough, we can't buy replacement parts for it. So we explored several options and, uh, are making a recommendation today. Um, by owning and operating our own fuel site, um, we are able to save, uh, an additional thirty to forty cents per gallon, which amounts to about fifty thousand dollars a year, between unleaded and fuel, unleaded and diesel fuel. I mean, and also, it's just, um, we're not reliant on independent, um, businesses to, to stay, um, in service, and, and especially during emergency operations. And we're gonna speak a little bit more about emergency operations here later. Um, the pumps have outlived their life, they're the old digital pumps, um, where, um, almost everything, they're old analog pumps, where almost everything is digital now, electronic. The current fuel management system's nineteen years old, and like I said, we're having trouble getting parts for it. It didn't always provide, um, accurate information, and we had to go, um, quite commonly, go over and just stab the tanks, if, if you're familiar with the terminology, instead of using electronics, you put a stick in there and measure how much is there, which is not very efficient. Um, we do have to report, summarize reports on those monthly and report to the state of Kansas as a fuel host operator, so, um, making sure that our, and measuring what we use, what's in the tanks, and making sure it's not leaking, just to protect our groundwater. Initially, we just started talking about the, uh, the FMU or the brains, but then we got to looking at the pumps themselves and, and, and discovered that there are integrated systems in play now that help us manage the fuel site, help us manage the vehicle maintenance. Um, the fuel pumps, um, are Bluetooth enabled, they can connect with the computer systems on today's cars and trucks, um, they can, if they're in proximity of those trucks, they can tell us when there's a, a code on those trucks or vehicles, it can tell them when there's a, a maintenance due on it. It's just more and more computerized, that that's kind of a central hub, that they all end up going by the fuel site, you know, on a daily or weekly basis, that we can, um, have a better record of the maintenance that's going on, on our vehicles. Those different modules and stuff come with the, the system. Uh, just, and then there's also a system, um, that, uh, right now, when the pumps recognize the vehicle, the fuel that goes into that vehicle, um, which operator put it in the vehicle, goes on the report forms to the state of Kansas. If those pumps are down, and we have to use one of the suppliers here in town, because they're of a similar system, um, it actually records that data, um, and it, it'll automatically get uploaded to the cloud and it get into our system correctly, without having to, um, basically have paper tally tickets and trying to track it all independently. There, again, a, a great advantage during an emergency. Our existing fuel tanks were installed in nineteen ninety-two, so we wanted to make sure that those tanks were still in good shape before we, uh, put new pumps on them. We had those tested last summer, and they came back with, uh, the tests were good, and that expected twenty-five to thirty years more life on the, on the existing tanks, which are at the fuel site. So it made sense to try to upgrade our system. There are two primary systems, um, in the Midwest right now that people use, they're the Gas Boy and the Fuel Master Systems. We are currently on a Fuel Master System. Hoydale is the, the service, servicing, um, for that Fuel Master System, Hoydale does service both Gas Boy and Fuel Master. We did look at all of the features and, and felt like the Gas Boy System, um, provided additional functionality and the technology that would enable us to get us off the network, which has a, a huge advantage to our CT staff. Improved data and improved operational efficiency, so we, we looked at the Gas Boy System, um, we solicited quotes from two vendors on the Gas Boy System, um, we solicited quotes from Hoydale and Double Check, another, um, firm that manages here in the Midwest, and, uh, Double Check did not respond to the request for quotes, so we did get quotes just from, um, Hoydale on the Gas Boy System. As a side note, KDOT is, is replacing their fuel management system statewide, um, in their area and sub-area shops, and they are going with the same system that Gas Boy is producing. So it's, it's commonly used, um, there's technicians that are trained to manage, um, to manage and maintain those, and, uh, even though the firm is out of Wichita, Hoydale has three trained technicians right here in Salina. So when we have a problem, it's, it's pretty easy for us to get service. That's, that's a real benefit. And, and using this system, we are gonna avoid, um, network firewall and connectivity issues in the future. The quotes here are listed, um, we got a separate quote for the Gas Boy Equipment System, and then there's a VETER route system, the Tank Management System was an additional ten thousand dollars, for the total of a hundred and seventeen thousand. And then with like anything electronics, um, uh, we asked for a five percent contingency just because there's some wiring or something that may come up, and we are asking for this this year, rather than going through the budgeting cycle and waiting to, until next year, because they told us there'll be a six percent increase, or five percent increase, if, or six percent increase if we wait until next year, and just the availability of parts and stuff, to get all the electronic components, it'll take us at least six months. So we want to get it approved now, get it ordered, and hopefully get it installed early next year. So we're trying to just, um, avoid additional costs by, um, buying it now and getting it So the total cost, um, is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, if we do it this year, it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand if we do it next year. The systems, uh, there is, because we are an entity, a known entity, working with Hoydale, there's no money down, nothing required from us, we have a letter from their president, and then they do pass along all the manufacturer's warranties, which are a year on all the parts and labor, so, um, those weren't included in your packet, but the city manager did ask me to make sure that you, you understood that we did get a warranty with this. Um, we do get field engineer training, they come out and show us all the bells and whistles and how to, to properly use the system, so that we're taking full advantage of all of the data capture technology. It is mission critical, um, to our staying in business. We've been, uh, preparing for a, um, a countywide tornado, um, training exercise for this fall, so we've been looking at all of the things the city needs to do to prepare for that, and having some redundancy for our fuel system is something that we, um, we noted. Currently, we don't have a backup power system, um, and, and there's no saying if we're out of power, the, the twenty-four seven or Casey's would be open, or any of the truck stops would be open either, so we felt like, uh, for ten thousand dollars, it, it's just a really good thing to have. Um, one correction in here, though, um, we, we, uh, we thought that there was a natural gas over at the HHW, and upon a further investigation, that the hot water heater and the furnace and stuff are over there all electric. So installing a gas service would be relatively expensive, but the same system can be purchased with a diesel backup, which we have an ample supply of, for about the same price. So the one correction is, it won't be a natural gas system, it would be a diesel-powered system. Um, and like the natural gas system, it'll be cycled every, um, every couple weeks or a month to make sure that the, 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 it trips properly, that it fires up properly, that it's, that it's in good working condition whenever we need it. Because we are asking for this early, um, rather than waiting for the budget cycle next year, um, city manager and Debbie Pack, the finance director, um, recommending that this, this purchase of this comes out of the Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, which does have a balance of nine hundred and thirty thousand at the current time. The ten thousand dollars, uh, for the emergency backup system or Generac, um, uh, would also come out of that same fund, so it'd be a total of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, we did have our legal staff look at the contract, and there were some things in the contract that, um, we couldn't necessarily agree to, so our legal staff is in debt. So our legal staff has in-depth, made, made corrections to that contract language. An addendum has been signed by the company owner and we're, they're in full agreement with the changes that we've, we've recommended. We've got actions, two different actions or an action, combined action for your consideration here. Authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement for PB Hoydale for replacing the fuel pumps and the fuel management system at the city's fuel site in the amount of $117,000 with a 5% contingency of $5,888.96. And authorize the solicitation of quotes for the fuel site and emergency backup generator and transfer switch for an additional $10,000 for a total not to exceed $133,668.13. Approving that same motion with amendments, postponing consideration or possibility of taking no action. The purchase of the emergency power, since it's 10,000 or less, is actually within the city manager's authority, but since it's part of a combined system that is well over his authority, we wanted to make sure that there's full transparency on everything that we're asking to do over there. So with that, I will stand for questions.
Okay. I'll look to my left.
No questions?
When you said the existing pumps are analog, are, is that the, the numbers spin around?
Yeah.
That has been a while.
Yeah, remember the old dollars and cents? We had a real problem when they only went up to $99. You can't, some vehicles today exceed that $99 at today's prices, so.
Okay. The sheriff's office fuels out of here, correct?
Yes.
Have they been approached about contributing to this project?
They have not. They, they pay their prorated share, there's so much, so much per dollar or per gallon of, of fuel, but they have not been approached about contributing to the upgrades of the system.
And as part of the study session conversation on budget, Debbie mentioned taking a look at the rates at Central Garage. We just need to make sure that we're covering cost plus to recover this as well as parts or whatever else we might do out of Central Garage.
Okay. On the generator, so you're going to shop for a generator that has a self-contained fuel tank then?
Yes. It'll have its own separate tank that'll be ready and it'll, it'll, on a, on a regular maintenance cycle, be fired up. The switch will be thrown to make sure that it comes on when it's supposed to. And then if, if it sits around too long, those tanks will have to be drained and new fuel put in just so that it doesn't expire.
Yeah, that was my concern with that kind of.
We have the proper type of diesel in there for wear and those kinds of things.
But then you don't want it to gel up when you have that major ice storm and.
Right. Okay. No more questions?
Major Lincoln?
No questions, but I am pleased to see the addition of the backup generator. That's a very good move.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Here, our move will approve. Authorize city manager to execute a purchase agreement with PB Holiday Incorporated for replacing the fuel pumps and fuel management system at the city fuel site in the amount of $117,779.17 with a 5% contingency of $5,888.96. And authorize the soliciting of quotes for a fuel site, emergency backup generator and transfer switch for an additional $10,000 for a total cost not to exceed $133,688.13.
Okay. Should be $668.13 is how it reads, so $20 difference there, so.
I transpose the number.
That's all right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with PB Hoydale Company, Inc. for replacing the fuel pumps and fuel management system at the city fuel site in the amount of $117,779.17 with a 5% contingency of $5,888.96. And authorize the soliciting of quotes for a fuel site emergency backup generator and transfer switch for an additional $10,000 for a total cost not to exceed $133,668.13. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes. That's actually item 6.3A and 6.3B pass 5-0. That will lead us to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, HPSA LLC Sales Tax Exemption and Industrial Revenue Bonds. 6.4A, approved resolution number 23-8132 in support of issuing industrial revenue bonds to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing and equipping a commercial hotel project for the benefit of HPSA LLC up to a maximum of $7 million. And item 6.4B, approved resolution number 23-8136 approving a change in ownership of the Comfort Inn and Suites, approving an amendment to the Community Improvement District Development Agreement and authorizing execution of related documents.
Mr. Hennessy?
Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. We have a new request for an IRB for the city to consider today. However, there's quite a bit of history to this project in the past, so if it's okay with you, I'd like to go over that a little bit of history to lay the groundwork for the resolution, actually the two resolutions you're having today. In 2018, the city was approached and agreed to incentivize the development of two hotels located in the map you see on the screen up above. At that point in time, there was two pretty severely dilapidated buildings on that property and the general approach of the city had been not to incentivize the, the development of hotels. However, there was a strong interest to get these dilapidated buildings removed. And as a result, the city agreed to provide both an IRB, which would relate to sales tax exemption for the construction of two new hotels, as well as created a CID district, Community Improvement District. And essentially what this does is it allows for the charging in various increments of a tax over and above to go to pay for the improvements for the hotels in this case. That was approved at the rate of CID's have a lifespan of 22 years and a 2% surcharge on sales taxes within that area. Only one of the hotels, the Comfort Inn, was constructed. The original plan was for construction of the Comfort Inn to start on March of 2018 and to finish by December 31st of 2018. The Comfort Inn was completed in September of 2019. The plans for the second hotel was for a Best Western and that was to start by October of 2018 and to finish by December 31st of 2019. So the Best Western was never constructed, however, the Comfort Inn was constructed and the CID has been in place and it has been generating that revenue. The CID formally went into existence in 2021 and as I said before, it's a 22-year lifespan for that CID district. If the second hotel is built within the CID district, then it will additionally contribute 2% sales tax surcharge to go to the owner to pay for the construction of the hotels as an incentive. However, the IRBs, which were originally approved in 2018, were not utilized for the Best Western. As such, they expired. So what you have before you today is a resolution for an IRB on sales tax exemption for construction materials for the second hotel, the Best Western, and modifications to the CID agreement, because remember the CID agreement is still in place, which modifies the timeline as far as when the CID, when the second hotel will have to be built. And what it would do is establish a new timeline that says that the Best Western Hotel would be started by August 1st of 2023 and would be completed by December 31st of 2024. Again, the CID is in place. It's going to continue to generate that sales tax surcharge. The second hotel would, would add to that sales tax surcharge and it would expire in 2043 under the, the original CID agreement. The, the IRB is to essentially replace the original agreement for a sales tax exemption because it was not utilized during that earlier timeframe. The end result of this would be, we would now be at the stage where we would have both hotels in operation and the same incentive packages that were originally envisioned back in 2018 would be in place. Yes. One of the other things that the second resolution, 20 through 8136, is covers the change of ownership. The original CID Development Agreement required approval of the city commission before there is any transfer of the ownership of the hotel. The property was transferred and what this resolution does is recognizes that transfer and meets the requirements of the original CID Development Agreement. I believe Mr. Bakta is here if you have any other questions, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, I'll start to my right.
No questions?
The 2% CID surcharge, do guests, are they aware of that when they come to one of your properties?
I believe that it is, it is on the receipt sales tax, but I believe Mr. Bakta could confirm that, yes. It is a, an additional charge, which is, would be located on the receipt, only within that district.
But, but a guest would not know about that beforehand?
To my knowledge, no.
Yeah. Okay.
No questions? I had a couple of questions. One, we're not extending the CID time period. They've just lost the ability to capture that 2% over the last four years, correct?
That's correct. The, the CID district is distinct from the IRBs. The IRBs have expired, so that's why there is a new request for an IRB. The CID has continued with the Comfort Inn in place. It's generating roughly $3,000 a month in that surcharge, which is going to pay again for some of the development costs of the, the hotels.
Yeah, I was just verifying we weren't, we were not extending.
Yes. And, and we do not have the ability to extend that. So it's a 22 years once it's approved and that will still expire in 43. So there is a couple of years of lost potential revenue since when the CID originally went into place. Additionally, the CID has a cap for the amount that can be captured, which is set at, in the original agreement and still would be today of either the lower of $2 million or 25% of the total project cost. So there is a cap and once that cap is reached, there's no more collected.
And I know we approved the IRBs and again, it was, you know, we usually don't do this on hotels. It was to take, you know, to get rid of a blighted area. It seems a little strange that we're four to five years later and we're now dealing with the IRBs again. It almost seems to me like you're almost handling it like it's, it almost seems like two separate projects than the one where we approved IRBs all at one time. I guess my question would be to the applicant is what was the delay, why the five-year delay in, in building the second facility?
Mr. Bakta, if you want to talk to them about the delay?
Good evening. My name is Hasu Bakta. I am the developer on I-70. To answer your question, originally our plans was to build both hotels at the same time so that it would be cost-effective. Due to the COVID, right at when I opened in 19, banks got scared, we got scared, not knowing what was going to take place. And that's what off-threw the Best Western project. If the COVID wasn't there, both hotels would have been constructed at the same time.
Okay. Seems to me that COVID really slowed things down in 2020. That's why I thought these were to be actually completed prior to 2020. What was the original completion date on the second hotel?
The, what was the, what date was your question?
What was the original completion date on the second hotel to be?
The original agreement for the Best Western was to start by October 1st of 2018 and to finish December 31st, 2019.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any comments or questions from the public? Okay. I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that this commission approve resolution number 23-8132, a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to finance the cost of acquiring. Is my on?
Was it?
Is my mic on?
I, I could hear you. Did anybody else hear about it?
Okay. My apologies. I'll go back here. 20, 23-8132, a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing and equipping a commercial hotel project for the benefit of HPSA LLC up to a maximum of 70, or $7 million.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 23-8132 indicating the intent of the city of Salina to issue industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $7 million. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-1. Okay, that will lead us to item 6.4B.
You're on a roll.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that this commission approve resolution number 23-8136, a resolution of governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas approving a change in ownership of the Comfort Inn and Suites, approving an amendment to the Community Improvement District Development Agreement and authorizing execution of related documents.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 23-8136 affirming the transfer of ownership of the Comfort Inn and Suites to Salina Hotel Group LLC and modifying the development agreement to require start of construction of a new hotel by August 1st, 2023 and completion of the second hotel by December 31st, 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay. That will lead us to development agreement or business, excuse me.
Item 7.1, consider acceptance of offered public utility easement dedication serving a new dormitory constructed on the Kansas State University Salina campus.
Good evening, Mayor and commissioners. The item before you on item 7.1 is to consider the acceptance of a public utility easement dedication that is serving a new dormitory that was constructed on the K-State Salina campus. That dormitory was recently completed north of the original dormitory Harbin Hall and it was designed to be served by a new public waterline extension that also serves a public fire hydrant. And because of that, it needs to be located within a public utility easement, which K-State has agreed to dedicate to the city. Had a roundabout journey to get here, but it's been to, to Pika to be approved by the attorney general's office and to Manhattan to be signed by Dr. Richard Linton and it is now ready for your consideration. And so your options this evening would be to accept the offered public utility easement dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the easement document. You could postpone consideration of the acceptance to a future meeting date to allow staff to provide additional information, or you could decline to accept the offered easement dedication and provide further direction to Kansas State University and city staff. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments in the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move we accept the offered public utility easement and authorize the mayor to sign the easement document, accepting the easement dedication on behalf of the city.
We have a motion and a second to accept the offered public utility easement and authorizing the mayor to sign the easement document, accepting the easement dedication on behalf of the city. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes 5-0. That will lead us to. Aye, opposed? That item passes five-zero. That will lead us to item seven point two.
Item seven point two, approve ordinance number two-three dash one-one-one-five-six on first reading, annexing a sixteen-acre tract of land located on the east side of South Ohio Street between Magnolia Road and the Stone Lake Edition.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. There was a piece of property comprised about a hundred and fifty acres that was purchased by Mr. Stan Byquist on the east side of South Ohio between Magnolia Road and Schilling Road. And the primary feature on that property is a unreclaimed sandpit lake known as the Knox Sandpit. And the front portion of that property was annexed into the city in 2021. And that is the site of the Cedarhurst Assisted Living Facility, which is under construction on the east side of South Ohio Street. And so that, that is this property right here where that is under construction. Mr. Byquist now wishes to plat and develop the area to the east of Lakeview Estates Edition Number Two and south of the Sandpit Lake as a residential housing area. He's filed this request to annex a sixteen-acre strip of ground outlined in blue there into the city limits in order to connect to city utilities and obtain full municipal services for housing development. And the city's policy is to require that annexation occur before any residential development can connect to city utilities. And so this property, the pink line is the city limit line. And so the Stone Lake Edition here is inside the city limits. This portion here is inside the city limits. The lake itself is outside the city limits. This is Mr. Byquist's residence outside the city limits. And then this is the former Johnson Sand Company Sandpit Lake, and it is outside the city limits. As far as the utilities serving the area, as we noted, the Stone Lake Edition was, to the south, was annexed in 2010. And the area to the west was just annexed within the last two years. This property is contiguous to areas that are currently being served by city police and fire protection. And so the comprehensive plan shows this area as intended for lower densities than what is seen out here. And the suburban residential density would be in the two to five acre range for single-family homes, duplexes, and townhomes. So the city has already made investments in the public utility system in this area. And if this property were annexed into the city, then this property would be subject to the city's property tax mill levy. The city is already maintaining South Ohio Street, which is the primary access to the Lakeview Estates property. So this request is being made in anticipation of future development of that property. And so your options in response to Mr. Byquist's request would be to approve the attached ordinance on first reading, annexing this sixteen-acre tract into the city. On first reading, this would allow development of the site to connect to public utilities and bring this under the administrative, regulatory, and law enforcement jurisdiction of the city. It would ensure that emergency response to the site is provided by Salina Police and Fire Departments. You could postpone consideration of this annexation request to a future meeting date to allow either the applicant or staff to provide you with additional information about the request, or you could decline to approve this annexation ordinance, which would leave the property outside the city limits. If you were to approve this action tonight on first reading, second reading would be held up until the property is final platted. So with that, we have Mr. Byquist and his engineers present this evening, but I'd be open to any questions you have about the annexation portion of this. There is a companion application to rezone the property for residential use. But the first step would be to see if the commission is supportive of annexation. If there's not support for annexation, there wouldn't be any reason to discuss the zonings.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Andrew?
My concern is, uh, here in the packet, the only property on the east side of Ohio that is not in the city limits is Mr. Byquist's property and the two houses on Ohio Street. It's been my concern about this jigsaw puzzle of the city limit boundaries. Is there, these two houses there, they are in the county and they're not served by Salina Fire. Is that correct?
Correct. They are also not hooked up to any city utilities.
Really?
Yeah, so they have, they have septic systems and wells. They're not currently receiving any city benefits. We do have, and as we discussed, we had a steady session with the planning commission recently on annexation, and there are circumstances under Kansas law where a city commission can unilaterally initiate annexation of property, even if the property owner doesn't desire that. And this is a case where on the map, the, those two houses are surrounded by the city limits on all four sides. So conceivably, there's a scenario by which the city could forcibly annex those properties, but they don't currently benefit. They would benefit from police and fire protection, but they would still be served by their well and not by, although there's hydrants in the area, but neither of those homes are hooked up to city water or sewer.
Interesting. I, I just, it seems like it'd simplify things if it was just a square.
It is, it is within the city commission's legal authority. Just as a matter of practice, the city commission has generally responded to requests to be annexed and not forcibly annexed, but it is within your power if that's something that the commission would want to initiate.
Okay, thank you.
One question. If the road to Mr. Byquist's house was not there, would there be any requirement that access to that property be available for fire action if it was annexed?
Well, we can, I was going to get into that more in the zoning case, but if Mr. Wood can go back to the aerial photo, I'll try to explain the situation. And I don't know if that is, if we can zoom out at all to see Ohio. But, uh, so this is not a live GIS view, but there is, there's a street coming over here. This is the Cedarhurst under construction, so this is a platted public street to here. There's a sixty-foot wide emergency access easement from Ohio that comes to here. And there is a sixty-foot emergency access easement right here at the end of Shoreline Drive that connects there. And so originally, Mr. Byquist, when he built his house, his driveway started at Ohio and went all the way back to his house. And since that time, this has been converted into a sixty-foot wide emergency access easement. And the, then we have an emergency access here connecting this road to Stone Lake and vice versa from Stone Lake to here. So in terms of access into the area, we have Lakeway Drive. We have Evening Bay Drive that would be extended here. We have an emergency access easement here, and we have an emergency access easement that extends offshore line drive. So right now, Mr. Byquist's driveway starts here and goes to his house. Under this proposal, a new public street would be constructed to this point. And then from that point, the driveway would go to his house. So I don't know if that helps with your question or not.
So if there was a grass fire in there, I don't know if there's any grass there, but there was a grass fire, our Salina Fire could reach that area tomorrow if they had to?
You're talking about Mr. Byquist's?
No, just the area that's being annexed in.
Yeah, so this, this would be, this road is not built yet. It'd have to be built. It's, it stops right here, right now. This would have to be extended to there. This would be extended. So this would be a public street all the way to here. And then you'd have access here and access here in an emergency situation. But as far as, I can't speak to the condition of the road from here getting back into this area. That's outside the city limits, and I, neither Mr. Byquist or anyone on city staff anticipates that ever coming into the city because it's, it would be extremely problematic to get any kind of sewer or water service back there because it's so far back.
Commissioner Ryan, any questions?
I have no questions.
Any questions or comments in the public?
Norman Manosalina, I just returned from a fixed game meeting last Thursday in Milford. And issues are coming up. You're developing this land. Are you looking at the Native American burial issues? This land right here in Salina, we are occupying the nation, land of the Pawnee Nation. You know, you got that burial site up, site of town here. So the Native Americans get involved in this. We're looking at big trouble.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number twenty-three-one-one-one-five-six on first reading, annexing a sixteen-acre tract of land located on the east side of South Ohio Street between Magnolia Road and Stone Lake Edition.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one-one-one-five-six on first reading, annexing a sixteen-acre tract into the city. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero. And that will lead us to item seven point three.
Item seven point three, approve ordinance number two-three dash one-one-one-five-seven on first reading, changing the zoning district classification from Slane County Ag to PDDR2 to allow the construction of single-family homes and townhomes on a sixteen-point-three-seven acre tract of land located on the south side of the Knox Sandpit.
Mayor and Commissioners, now to vindicated support for extending water and sewer into this area. Mr. Byquist has submitted a companion application to rezone this property from Slane County Agricultural to residential use. And just by way of background, on November twenty-second, 2021, you gave final approval to two ordinances, annexing and rezoning the front thirty-four acres of this property between the lake and South Ohio to a mix of zoning districts to allow for an assisted living memory care facility. There are townhome lots backing up to the lake. There's a future apartment site and a commercial office lot along South Ohio. Right now, the only thing that's, where construction is underway is the assisted living facility here. So the request before you is to extend the thirty-four acre subdivision that's along South Ohio to include this, I'm referring to it as a peninsula of land that's sandwiched between the Sandpit Lake and Stone Lake to the south. Mr. Byquist has filed an application for planned development district R2 zoning. And under that zoning designation, that would allow for the construction of either single-family homes or two-unit townhomes. We have seen, there's an area that Mr. Byquist had in Quail Meadows Estates that every lot was zoned R2, and every lot has a single-family home. So R2 does allow for the market to decide whether it's for single-family or two-family development, but it would allow up to two-unit townhomes on those lots. As part of his planned development district request, Mr. Byquist has requested a variation from the front setback requirement. It's similar to one that was approved on the lots that back up to the west shore of the Sandpit Lake. And as you might note, the, the peninsula is, is narrow at some points. We also have a city-owned drainage easement. What's interesting about that, if you look at the plat, is that the nineteen nineties was a very wet period in the city of Salina. So the city went out and acquired, basically had surveyor draw a circle around the water level in the Sandpit, and the city acquired a drainage easement for the entire sandpit that was occupied by water. Well, right now, the Sandpit water level is quite a bit lower than it was in the nineteen nineties, so there is area that's subject to that drainage easement, but is currently dry ground. So under the current county zoning that applies to this property, the property would be limited to agricultural uses, and any kind of one or two-family dwelling construction would be prohibited. And so the applicant believes that the current ag zoning limits the development potential of this property on the south side of the Sandpit Lake. As we noted, the portion that's closer to Ohio is, is, was anticipated to have higher density uses. And because this is more remote from Ohio, it is shown as suburban residential, which would be, anticipate lower development densities. And so the applicant believes that developing this with a mix of single and two-family dwellings would conform with the character of the housing that's around it. Again, the property that is on the, this, these lots here were zoned for townhome use backing up to the Sandpit Lake. And so he's proposing to extend that modeling there. So your role this evening is to determine whether that requested R2 zoning and Mr. Byquist's development plan, plan for the property would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and the zoning and uses of nearby properties. As far as public utilities and services, wanted to point out that as part of the addition number two, there is an eight-inch water line that comes in off of Ohio Street, goes up Lakeway, goes up Evening Bay Drive, and then ties in to an eight-inch line in the Stone Lake Edition. And that creates a loop. The applicant in this case is proposing to extend a water line off of that line into his peninsula area and then tie that back to an existing water line in Shoreline Cove. And then that would form a, a mini-loop, so to speak. So we would not have a dead-end line on the proposed dead-end street. There's an interceptor sewer line that runs along the west side of the lake, and the developer would be responsible for extending sanitary sewer from that interceptor into this subdivision. The entire purpose of the city acquiring the Sandpit Lake was to have a regional detention area for development in that area to drain into with the payment of a fee. And so the plan here would just to have the townhomes drain into the Sandpit and the, the lots would be subject to a impact fee for drainage. So this is a fully developed area of the city, and existing public utilities have enough capacity to serve Mr. Byquist's development. There are police and fire protection that's being provided to nearby properties. The other thing that was, was even surprising to staff when we ran the numbers, that even if you would consider townhomes in this area, the proposed density is only- if you would consider townhomes in this area, the proposed density is only between one and one-point-eight units per acre. And so it's, it's a very low-density development with, with the fifteen lots, even if, if townhomes were built. So the Planning Commission also considered this request at their June sixth meeting, and they voted seven to zero to recommend that the zoning map be amended to change the zoning classification of this property from Sling County Ag to Plan Development District R2 as requested by the applicant, and they included the requested setback variation to allow the front setbacks to be reduced to twenty feet. They had two conditions in their action. One was establishing the development limitations for the lots and allowing for the twenty-foot setback, and then their recommendation for the zoning change was subject to submittal and approval of a final plat prior to final zoning approval. And so the Planning Commission also voted six to one to approve Mr. Byquist's preliminary plat layout, and a copy of that was attached to your report, and Mr. Wood had it up on the, the screen there. So speaking again a little bit about fire access and fire access discussion, as part of the plat application, Mr. Byquist requested a variation from the maximum length of a cul-de-sac street. So just so you have that information, this street from this terminus point to the end of the cul-de-sac is fourteen-hundred-and-ninety feet from the Evening Bay subdivision entrance to the end of the street. And the Planning Commission approved that length variation as part of their approval of the preliminary plat. The other thing I wanted to point out was that the, in terms of the, the fire code, that the standalone Lakewood or Lakeway Estates number three, or Lakeview Estates number three, only has thirty dwelling units maximum, or fifteen if it's all single-family. So that in and of itself does not require two access points in, but we looked at this in terms of combining Lakeview Estates number two and Lakeview Estates number three. And so the, the total distance between Lakeway Drive and Stone Lake Emergency Access is sixteen-hundred-and-fifty feet, and so that, that exceeds the diagonal distance of the area being served, which is, has a twenty-eight foot length. So I don't know if Mr. Wood could go back to the aerial photo from the GIS, but I'll, I'll show you how that, that calculation is made. So the diagonal distance from this corner of the development to here is twenty-eight-hundred feet, and this point right here is sixteen-hundred-and-fifty feet from this point here. So those two access points are sufficiently remote from each other to be more than fifty percent of the diagonal distance of the development. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about this road right here, and that is property that's owned by Johnson Sand Company. And I just wanted to point out that it, it can still happen and should still happen when, when and if Mr. Johnson goes to develop that property. But the way that this plat is laid out, the right-of-way for Byquist Way, which is the street here, touches on this Gary Johnson property. And so without any intervening strip or anything, a street could be connected up to that in the future, should this property develop. But this is not, this road is there, it's been used by gravel trucks for years, but it's not, it's not a, it's not a designed or approved fire access road, but it does physically touch right here in terms of a potential future access point into this area. So with that, I will pause for any questions you have about Mr. Byquist's plan to build single-family homes and townhomes. I did want to go through your options real quickly, that the first, the first one would be to concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the attached ordinance on first reading. The ordinance says before you would rezone this property to PDDR2. If you disagree with that recommendation, you could return this item back to the Planning Commission with your reasons for that disagreement. And an example of that would be if you believe that this subdivision should be limited to single-family homes and no townhomes, you could send this back to the Planning Commission and indicate that that's your position on, on the use of these lots. You could postpone consideration of this application to a future meeting date to allow additional information to be provided, or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and deny the PDD application filed by Mr. Byquist. That would take four votes at today's meeting to deny the application, and then you would need to adopt alternate findings from the findings the Planning Commission made. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Andrews?
On the, the map here, this circular area, it's conservation, is that what, on a high low, high-water year, that would be underwater?
Well, I'll ask Mr. Wood to go put the, the development plan layup, layout again, and I'll, you're referring to the drawing that's in the packet that shows drainage easements, conservation easements, that type of thing?
Yeah, the circular area.
This up here?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's really hard to, to read, but there's, there's a, a drainage easement that comes up into these yards, and that's the former high-water mark that was in there. And then Mr. Byquist has also created what he's calling a conservation easement, and that's, that's an area where there's a lot of scrubby trees and overgrowth. And Mr. Byquist can explain it better than I can, but at his, his plan, he's made that a conservation easement and provided himself as developer with ingress and egress there because if he has buyers who buy these lots and they're not maintaining these areas back here that he's got designated as conservation easement, then he's reserving the right to himself to go back there and clean those areas up and assess the cost back to those lot owners. So that, that's the purpose of the conservation easement.
With the dotted line here, that's the high-water mark, huh?
If it's, if it says drainage easement.
Oh, oh, that's, that one, okay.
Yeah, there's also, just for added interest, there's also a floodplain boundary in there that doesn't quite correspond with the drainage easement. But there's, there's three lines in there. One is a conservation easement that Mr. Byquist can better explain. There is a drainage easement, which the city acquired back in nineteen ninety-nine, and then there's just portions of these lots that as platted are in the mapped one-hundred-year floodplain. And so those are the three lines that are on there.
Okay, so the lot, the lot boundary is that, that top line?
Yes.
So those are really deep lots?
Yes, and so the reason for the conservation easement, and it's, it just corresponds to what Mr. Byquist owns. It's a long story that Mr. Bankston would love to tell you about at some later date, but we spent a long time trying to buy the sand pit outright, and we were not successful doing that, so we just bought the right to drain water into it, which is a drainage easement. But the, the way that this is configured, those are exceptionally deep lots, and Mr. Byquist's idea for the conservation easement is that if he has heavy equipment or things at his disposal, that he will go back there and keep those areas cleaned up if the property owner doesn't.
Okay, and, and my next question is, will these residents have rights to the water?
I'll let.
It's a little tricky with the city having the.
We, we have an easement, it's basically, the easement is to allow water to, to drain into it, so we, we can control that, but we don't control access to the water.
Okay, so that's my question, will the residents have access to the water?
The, the problem here compared to something like Stone Lake or others is that this sand pit was never properly reclaimed, and so it has near vertical banks, whereas at Stone Lake, the banks are tapered, and so you can actually walk down to the water. There's places here, there's, there's twelve, fourteen-foot vertical drops of the bank, so it's not, it's not like you're going to walk out your back door to a dock. There's a lot of reshaping that have to be done, but Mr. Byquist is a lot more familiar with that than I am, so I'll let him speak to that.
Stan Byquist Salina, thank you for taking the time to hear my applications, and thanks for the city staff gathering, gathering, gathering everything. I believe this was thoroughly studied earlier by the Planning Commission, but I will try and answer some of Mr. Longmine's questions about the easement, I guess I'll call it. I've been associated with this, this land since two thousand. I've seen it go up, I've seen it go down. It retains a lot of water from the south of Salina, and that, that's why the city bought the drainage rights prior to Mr. Johnson and I acquiring the land from the Miller family. The, the circle you refer to down in there, Mr. Longmine, that, that, yeah, the area where the cursor is almost, but that area, well, as a matter of fact, that area, four, five years ago.
Push that button there.
Okay, thank you, Dean. This area, four or five years ago, when Salina had the great big rains, was virtually underwater, although shallow in many places, to a line kind of like this. What, and then, then it has receded. Now, the majority of this land, I can get down to with a tractor and a big mower and mow it. If I don't do that, then it will grow up in new cottonwood trees. I've seen it happen before and had to take a bulldozer down in there. And that, if Dean, I stand corrected, but that is part of the city's drainage retention area, and I don't believe the city would like to see it grow up in cottonwood trees like it did in the past. So that, that's the whole idea on the conservation easement area is to maintain it. Most of these banks along here are not that steep. There's one area right there, that lot, is fairly steep and will have to be reshaped. The others are not bad at all, so the property owners can go down there fairly easily, or we will when it's developed, and slope it, and they'll have access.
So, so property owner, if they wanted to, to spend the money and put a little dock and?
These, that, these property owners will all have water and a dock if they so choose.
So if they want to go down there and fish and swim, they can?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And with that, I'll take any more questions, if there are any.
If that's part of the city's, or drainage, and you talk about cottonwoods, who is responsible for keeping that cleaned out? Because Mr. Byquist won't be around forever, sorry.
No, no.
Didn't want to break the news.
In real life, probably not. I have created an ingress and egress right in this area here, I think it's right there, to get equipment down in there if need be.
Because, because my question is that, those properties, as we look at that, will actually be fee-titled to somebody? Even though, am I not correct? I'm, I'm looking at, anybody, but, so if, if I bought one of those lots, I would own fee title, so is there an agreement that allows the city or someone to go in there and clean out that area that needs to be retained for, on the city's behalf for drainage purposes?
I don't recall the specifics of that document, to tell you the truth. It has been quite a long period.
Shouldn't we have one before that is platted? I mean, shouldn't that be part of the documentation that allows us?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the question will become whether that's considered an encroachment on our easement, and when it would be the property owner's responsibility to keep it clear?
That's fair. I, I honestly don't recall the arrangement in relation to that location well enough to speak to it accurate, with confidence that I can accurately. I don't know if.
I'll try and answer. I, I don't know the, the legal ramifications here, but my intent, and that's why the conservation easement is there, to make sure they take care of that land that water doesn't occupy.
Has that conservation easement been established? Is that, or is that a document yet to be?
We are at the preliminary plat stage, and if you recall, we had discussions with Overlook Estates Development about recording a conservation easement, so there will be a conservation easement recorded as part of the plat. I had the, the language here in front of me, but.
I may be getting ahead of myself, because right now, we're just looking to rezone this, so I guess what we're talking about would really be part of the plating process.
When this comes back for a final plat, that would be the time to grill us on whether we have adequately, but the, the drainage easement document that the city acquired, the drainage rights is, does not make the city responsible for any maintenance there, and so our job as part of the plat is to document that the owners are responsible for that maintenance, and what Mr. Byquist wants to set up is a mechanism where if they fail to do so, the developer with heavy equipment can do that and then assess the cost back. That would be a note on the plat, so anyone who buys a lot there would have notice.
And just, and again, I know, not only should it be the developer, but I think it ought to be the city also, because the developer, as we said, in twenty, thirty years may not be able to drive a truck.
Be the developer and their successors or sons, or it would have that type of language in it. We would work with Mr. Bankston to make sure that it carried on from owner to owner.
Because my concern would be that that's not maintained and that we didn't have the correct drainage, and not only would it affect the city, it would affect those property owners if that drainage backed into their property, so.
Pingy back question, when the city bought the right to use that as a, what did we actually buy, in that we didn't buy the property itself? Did we buy the right to keep someone from doing something with that, or?
We bought the right to store water in it.
Water that was going to go there anyway.
Water that had gone there historically, but the, it's a long, it's a long, long story, but I can, I can make it brief. I lived in that area, so I can recall for an entire week, the intersection of Magnolia and Ohio was closed to traffic. And it was closed to traffic because of flooding and because all the water from that area, and especially east, or to the west of Ohio around South High, was all trying to drain up to the oxbow at Red Fox Lane. And it was all backing up, and because it couldn't, it couldn't drain, Ohio Street was underwater at various locations, Magnolia and Ohio was underwater for seven days, and then that oxbow receded. So the, when Ohio Street. So the, when Ohio Street was widened to four lanes, the city went in and reversed engineered the drainage in that area. And instead of sending it north up to Belmont and to the Red Fox Lane area, they sent all the water south into the Knox Sandpit. And we felt that in order to redirect all that water there, we should have the storage rights to do that, cause we couldn't impose that burden on a private landowner. So the city commission authorized staff to go out and acquire the storage rights in that area so we could direct a very large drainage basin of water into that sandpit that didn't used to go there.
Okay, and that answered the question that was gonna follow up with, did we redirect some water in there? And obviously we did, yeah.
There's, there's a map associated with it, there's 175 acres of property in Salina that used to drain north that now drains south into the sandpit. And so the city went out and acquired the right to store all that water in the sandpit instead of sending it north. And that, that was the reason for doing that.
At the risk of oversimplifying, is it safe to say that conservation areas should be treated like a floodway, not a floodplain? If, if something were to obstruct that area, is it going to affect drainage down the way?
Yeah, I think the main, from an administrative standpoint, the main concern we're gonna have and work with Mr. Byquist on is that some of those owners will be disappointed that they might have an area they wanna put a large shed or garage in, and we're gonna tell them you can't, because that's part of the drainage easement that's controlled by the city. So you gotta keep your shed or your storage building out of the drainage easement. So the, the drainage easement is, is gonna accomplish that somewhat. Mr. Byquist's concern is that the area that's within that, or even next to it, that would overgrow if the water level drops too much, that, that might get neglected by future lot owners. And he wants to reserve the right to get in there and clean that up if necessary, and-
So the follow-up question I have regarding that issue would be, why couldn't we just treat this legally like a utility easement, which there are consequences for not maintaining those areas as well?
Well, we, there's all, we have some standard language that we use already in stormwater detention ponds on, that we letter on plats, that says, if you as a owner of the detention pond don't maintain it, then the city has the right to enter upon that, perform any maintenance, and assess the cost of that back to the lot owners. So we would, we could do something like that here, but Mr. Byquist also wants to have the conservation easement to give him the same right. But there's, there's no reason we couldn't create a system that gives both the developer and his successors and the city the right to go in and, and do that and assess the cost back, as long as we document it. And so when people buy lots, they know that they're subject to that restriction.
I think that circles back to, which, the bottom line is, Mr. Byquist is being a good citizen and a good neighbor by offering that service. But at some point, things do change, property owners do vary as time goes by. And I just, I keep thinking about the fact that the burden of that needs to be the property owner. I mean, cause we can voice it on to Mr. Byquist, but at some point, a decision's gonna have to made down the road.
The way it's set up, the responsibility is on the lot owner, and the easement is only there to allow Mr. Byquist to fix it if they don't maintain it. But we can, we, we can, we can set it up with an extra layer that also gives the city that right if they fail, because we do have a public interest in maintaining that drainage easement.
Yeah, I, I think I kinda led us down a rabbit hole that's for plating, but at least I think city staff knows that where we kinda stand, at least by doing this. Cause right now, we're, we're just, you know, we're looking at changing the zoning district, but I think it's been good conversation. And I think, I think the city staff probably sees some of our concerns and-
Any action today is first reading, subject to final plating, and the final plat will come back to you.
Two, on page, on the blue sheet, it's page three, I'll let you get that. And it, maybe the math part, my brain's not working right. But way at the bottom there, one, two, three, four, conditions, or not conditions, but descriptions. And it reads, minimum lot area 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit, but not less than 6,000 square feet. Should that be no less than? I kept reading it and reading it, and I'm saying-
Well, I think it could, it could read either way. I think we've had some discussions, it's, it's happening out in Southview, it happens in other areas. So we often have a situation where a two-unit townhome gets built, and then the ownership's divided down the common wall. And so the, the 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit is just to make sure that if you have a situation that's divided, that you have that. But the 6,000 square feet is to make sure that no, no lots are platted that are less in size than 6,000 square feet. But I don't, it's a semantical question whether that should be not less or no, no less. But the, the point is that the minimum lot size in that zoning district is 6,000 square feet. So if Mr. Byquist had proposed a 5,300 square foot lot, we would've said that's too small.
Okay, and walk me through the scenario on the length of the road as far as fire- protection now, because this is only 15 lots, the, does that eliminate the minimum or the maximum length of the roadway?
If, if we, if we looked at Mr. Byquist's addition number three as a standalone, isolated subdivision, it has less than 30 lots. Or it would have less than 30 dwellings, so even, or not more than 30 dwellings. So the, the, the fire code says, developments of one or two family dwellings where the number of dwellings exceeds 30 shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads, and shall meet the requirements of section D 104.3. So if you looked at Mr. Byquist's addition number three that we had up there on the screen with the peninsula, it does not have more, it does not exceed 30 dwelling units. So it does not need to have two separate approved fire apparatus access roads. However, as a staff, we looked at it as an extension of Lakeview Estates addition number two, which extends out to Ohio Street, because the access into this area is from Ohio Street. So we looked at it as combining addition number two and addition number three. And we determined that the diagonal distance from the northwest corner to the southeast corner was 2,800 feet. And that requires two separate fire apparatus access roads. And they need to be placed a distance apart equal to not less than one-half the length of the overall diagonal dimension of the area to be served. So we determined that that was 2,800 feet, and that we determined that this location right here is 1,650 feet away from this location. So it has this access, and coming through Stone Lake, it has this access, which are 1,650 feet apart.
Okay, now what about the, is there any minimum, maximum length of, I believe it's gonna be called Byquist Way?
There is a maximum length in the subdivision regulations of a dead-end street, which is 600 feet. And the planning commission approved a variation of that length from 600 feet to 1,490 feet. And they did that due to the location and configuration of the property and the surrounding ownership pattern. The flood control levee prevents access to and from the east, and the only available access is from the west. And due to the sandpit on the north and the levee to the east, it's not physically possible to develop a network of streets that connect to the adjoining property.
But that's, you know, following my logic, that's not the conclusion I come up with. If the law, rule says it can't be more than 600, and you're saying, well, we can't do it because of the way it's built, then the conclusion is, don't build it. Every time we make a, you know, if we have a rule that it can't be more than 600 feet, I don't know how many times in the last year we've, you know, overridden this. And there's either something wrong with the rule, or something wrong with us for overruling it. Cause sooner or later, something bad's gonna happen. And I just, you know, if it's, if it's impossible to build something within our, our, our code, we need to change the code, because the code's outdated and we haven't applied enough science and knowledge to it. Or our code says, don't build it. I just, you know, every time we get asked to extend this, this rule, we're just pushing that day of a misfortunate, unfortunate accident a little bit closer.
From a life safety standpoint, I think the 30 units is more indicative of fire response. In direct answer to your question, I, I, when you write an ironclad rule like that, I don't know how you take into account all the different geographic circumstances we might have. If, if you're uncomfortable with having to apply discretion based on the way the rule's written, and I think we need to amend the rule to grant you more direct discretion. I think the discretion is there already, but if it makes you more comfortable to be more explicit about that discretion, then I think an amendment would be in order.
Well, the question I'd come back to, why did, why does the rule say 600 feet? I mean, was that outdated because fire trucks and fire equipment weren't good when the rule was written? I mean, if, if the science, if the rule's not kept up with the science, you know, bring me that, let's change the rule.
Right, I, with respect to the length of cul-de-sacs, the thing I've heard from the fire department the most is avoiding having to back out of a dead-end cul-de-sac. Although, one of the things that they enter into the conversation quite a bit is turnaround, the ability to turn around, whether that's a hammerhead or some other street configuration, which, Mr. Andrew, it appears to me that there is a unique configuration of the road right away at the end, taking into account turnaround possibly?
So is the 600 feet, you know, if it takes them 30 minutes to back it out, you know, costs of doing business. But is that the only reason for the 600 feet? Or is it because if they couldn't go a certain distance down the road, they only have 600 feet of hose? I mean, what, what's the reason for the 600 feet?
Different communities have variations, some of it depending on density. But the, the 600 foot is pretty universal nationwide, and most communities have. What Mr. Skreg described is a variation or variance process to deal with unique topographical conditions or barriers. But the general purpose of the 600 feet is to limit the distance that the fire department has to drive in order to reach a place to turn around.
So it's not-
It doesn't have to do with the number of homes, or the length of hose, or the ability to place things. It's so that they can get turned around and get back out and respond somewhere else, or get somewhere else as quickly as possible. The longer the run of the cul-de-sac, the farther they have to travel to get to the turnaround point.
But it's not from the firefighting, my, my concern is from the firefighting ability. Cause you know, one home is just as important as 30 to me.
What has been explained to me, it's their ability to get from where they are, to respond to another call, or to go to another location, so they can get turned around and get back out. Not, not their ability to get there in the first place, or to fight a fire when they're there, but to get turned around and get back out to respond to another call.
And the road configuration at the end appears to account for the turning movement?
Yes, there's a, there is a minimum turning radius, and that, we had a text amendment to that in 2004 that was initiated by the Salina Fire Chief, and that's so that that cul-de-sac turnaround radius was sufficient for their latest piece of equipment, which was a quint. So we increased the diameter of our turnaround at the end of dead-end streets to better accommodate the ability of a quint unit to turn around within that radius.
So is there an official cul-de-sac at the end of this, or it's just the dirt happens to be flat enough that in this case it works?
It's a paved cul-de-sac, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it's a little irregular in shape, but it accounts for the turn movement.
Okay. Commissioner, right?
No questions?
Okay. Any comments or questions from the public?
Morning, Madam Ginsman, this issue was discussed at that meeting in Milford with the US Fish Department. Is it a wetlands? The Supreme Court is questioning these developments, we've got wildlife habitat. The Department of Interior, the Secretary of that Interior is Deb Havlin, she's interested in it. We're looking at the Department of Water Resources. And is this a conservation easement or easement trust? There's a lot of questions that haven't been answered, the Endangered Species Act. Buyer beware.
Good afternoon, John Blanchard. First of all, you, the item before you is to rezone this parcel to a PDD R2. So Mayor, your instincts, I think, were correct in that this is actually a discussion about the plat. You cannot rezone to a PDD unless you are discussing a specific plat. So I don't think you guys are out in front of yourselves or anything. I think all of these items are better discussed upfront rather than waiting for the final plat, because you may come across something that you wanna send it back to the planning commission for them to take care, versus, well, let's just wait for the final plat. We've, we've seen that before. Commissioner Davis, you're absolutely correct. A lot of land is simply not developable. I believe in our subdivision regulations, we discourage single-frontage roads. Two-thirds of this subdivision is single-frontage roads. As a taxpayer and someone that's gonna be taking care of these roads in perpetuity with tax dollars, they're inefficient. You're only, you're only having property tax generated on one half of that revenue generating street. So, but I, I will say this, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to this subdivision. I hope it is two twin lots, because I think it would generate more revenue. So I'm not opposed to it. From that standpoint, we have much worse subdivisions in this community than this one. To answer your question again, Dr. Davis, the 600-foot cul-de-sac length, where does that number come from? That number, and I'm a land planner, I have 30 years of land planning experience, most of it in mountain communities, where there is rarely a cul-de-sac longer than 600 feet, and it's a lot steeper terrain than here. Two reasons, one is efficiencies. Whether it's plowing streets, emptying garbage, as I said before, collecting revenue on, on those, it, it's a lot easier. Water service, you tend to eliminate dead-end water lines and create situations where you say, well, the city's gonna come in and pick up looping into it. Well, you don't do that when you don't have a long dead-end cul-de-sac. But the other, other than efficiencies and that, is public safety. And it's not because of fire. You have a cul-de-sac turnaround at the end that compensates for that, and doesn't matter how long the cul-de-sac is. The 600 feet is generally a national standard, and it's always been based on traffic counts. They usually figure 200 to 250 annual daily trips. And that generally corresponds to about as many lots as you can fit on a 600-foot-long cul-de-sac. Generally a little longer if you have more frontage, but that's what it is. It has nothing to do with, with the fire department for a 600-foot cul-de-sac length. Thank you. Thank you.
If you have any more questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
If, if there was a big, big rain, do we have any ability to alter where that water, is that, once that water's in the drainage system, it's going to end up there? I'm, I'm just wondering, how, how far up can the water come in, in a big, big rain?
Other than some Herculean methods that don't occur to me off the top of my head, I'm not aware of a way to significantly divert. At some point, there'd be an overflow and a discharge.
There's a spillway on this lake up on the north side, and so if the water reaches a certain level, it's going to go through that spillway to the north. So I keep having Mr. Wood go back to the aerial photo, but we'll try again one more time, and I'll show you where that is. So, up in the northeast corner, if you're driving down Magnolia Road, and you look to the south, you'll see this big wooded ravine that's just to the west of the soccer complex on the other side of the levee. And that ravine is where the water comes out of the Knox sandpit, and so it, it goes up through this, there's a spillway right here, and if the water level gets too high, it goes over the spillway, it comes up here, and there, there's a channel that goes under Magnolia Road and up here and goes, there's a flap gate here, and so this water goes up there and is discharged into the river there. So if the water, it's designed so if the water exceeds the drainage easement level, it's going to go over that spillway and go up through that channel to the north on a regular basis. There's hardly any water going in there, but in a flood event, that spillway would channel water overflow into here.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions from the public? Yeah, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we concur with the findings and recommendation of the planning commission. Ordinance number 23-11157, rezoning the 16-acre tract of land to PDD R2 should be approved on first reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to concur with the findings and recommendations of the planning commission in approving ordinance number 2311157 on first reading, changing the zoning district classification from Salina County Ag to PDD R2 to allow the construction of single-family homes and townhomes on a 16.37 acre tract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will lead us to item 7.4.
Item 7.4, approve ordinance number 23-11158 on first reading, approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of barricaded public areas at such event.
Good evening, again. I've got two items here, item 7.4 and 7.5. Both of those are special events where they're seeking your authorization to allow consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of a barricaded public street area. And we've provided you with a lot of the background and the state law on this subject. What we noted now is that under state law, they have what is called a temporary permit for a street, road, or sidewalk event. And so that is, there are certain state law requirements. And then, the first one that's before you is Feast on the Fay, which occurs in the, in South Santa Fe, and has occurred for a number of years, and it's proposed in the same event location as it was last year between Iron Avenue and Walnut. And so, the local Food Works Foundation has submitted their application for 2023, and they have scheduled their event to take place on Saturday, September 9th. And their plan is to have street closure and set up for the event beginning at 3:00, with the event and alcoholic beverages served from 6 to 9, and event tear-down from 9 to 11. And as in years past, the purpose of their event is to raise awareness of local food, farmers, and also to provide entertainment to downtown Salina. And so, the actual dining area will be from Campbell Plaza on the north, Walnut Street on the south, with barricades placed at Iron Avenue. And so, they have a rain backup date of September 16th. And so, as, as part of the review process, these applications, if they take place within the downtown business improvement district, are referred to the SDI for an advisory recommendation. And what occurred in the past was that the initial application was to propose to close Santa Fe starting at 1:00 PM on Saturday, and there was some pushback on that from some of the merchants. So that setup time was moved to 3:00, and indications are that that was more acceptable. And speaking with Leslie Bishop with SDI, she indicated that there were no concerns about last year's event, or about the plan to duplicate that event this year. And so, under the, the ordinance, section 524, that the city has in place currently, there are several requirements to have alcoholic beverages consumed at a special event on a public street. And the first of those is the public street must be closed to motor vehicle traffic by the governing body. There has to be a written request for consumption and possession of alcohol at that event, which we have from Feast on the Fay. Based on that application, the special event is reviewed and approved by the governing body by ordinance on the basis of criteria established by a resolution of the governing body with or without conditions. So we have attached to your packet there, the resolution that was adopted by the governing body in 2012, and that ordinance, or that resolution established criteria for what special events would justify closing the street in the downtown area. And so, this particular event has been held in 2016, 2018, 2019, 2021, and 2022, and has seemed to go well and be well-received by the community. So this is a request to hold that same event on September 9th of this year, and an ordinance has been drafted for your consideration. And they would need to take that ordinance and attach it to their state permit application and send it up to Topeka if you were to approve this event. So your alternatives this evening would be approve ordinance 231158, approving Feast on the Fay as a special event, and authorizing consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area on South Santa Fe. You could approve that ordinance and make any modifications to the location, size, or date, or time of that event. You could postpone consideration of this request to a future meeting, to allow additional information to be provided by the applicants or staff. Or you could decline to approve the attached ordinance and deny approval of the proposed special event. So you have a map in your packet depicting that, the map is identical to last year's event, the timeframes, the location, everything is pretty much identical to last year's event, except it's, last year it took place in October, and this year it's September. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about Feast on the Fay.
Any questions or comments from the public? I think we're all...
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 23...
Thank you, Ed. You can come in.
I'm sorry. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you, I'll try and make this super quick. First of all, the, the street's going to be closed, are the sidewalks going to be open? Will there be access? As you know, I walk my dog in the evening, and, and will I, will I be able to walk on the sidewalks?
East side will be...
The east side, okay. Second is, is that, we didn't discuss any fee involved with this. If there's a fee to use that and have everything closed off. And the reason I ask is I want to make it perfectly clear, I, I hope there's not. I mean, it's a good event, and I hope that we can accommodate for things like that. I know that we don't charge a fee for the KKOA to use Oakdale Park. One, one thing I would like to make a recommendation for, it's my understanding that the Juneteenth Committee was required to put $2,000 down to rent Oakdale Park. It wasn't excluding anyone else. In fact, we saw a wedding party there taking pictures as part of it. So the park was completely accessible to everyone else, and yet, the Juneteenth Committee was required to pay $2,000 for the use of that park from, I think, 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. So it's not that I think people ought to be charged for that use, but I would just hope if we're letting KKOA and other people use these things, that we apply those fees equally. And if it is true that they were required to pay $2,000 for that, and no one else is being charged to do that, that somehow we find it in our hearts to reimburse the Juneteenth Committee. Thank you very much.
So, a little bit in response to that, we, as you may recall, adopted special event policy and fee structure. So there are fees relative to the nature of the event, the size of the event, the services being requested. That's relatively new, that's been, the approach is relatively new. We've been implementing it this year. We, staff has talked about getting a season under our belt, and then we can report back to you how that's gone and revisit the fee structure. So not necessarily a universal fee across all events, but there are fees applicable depending on the, the estimated size and the nature of the services requested. And it's, I think, as staff indicated when they first presented, it's not full cost recovery by any means, but it is intended to kind of be graduated based on the anticipated event. I can't speak to the specifics of the, the amount of the Juneteenth permit or the basis of that.
So, my question is, that actually charge $2,000?
I, I would have to check, I don't know.
There's different, if you look at the feast, and I know I've talked to Mr. Skragg about it, is reviewing that, because I know sometimes it, it comes down to the number of individuals, it depends on what public services are required, or police required to block off streets, is sanitary, so it depends on the event, and they have a formula, I believe, that you fill, as you fill out your application, there's a formula there.
But the fee structure, I, I recall, you know, a fee for doing a parade because of the resources it takes to block the streets off, and...
And I don't know what this one is.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head either. I guess my suggestion would be that we can revisit those fees and certainly take a look at them, but I'm not prepared to speak to the fee structure or what, how it was calculated at the moment.
I think if it's going to cost $2,000 to reserve the park, that's going to pretty much eliminate a lot of people from...
Yeah. But I don't know. Okay, any other comments? We do have a, okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 2311158, approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on South Santa Fe Avenue during the event.
Second. Okay, I'll shorten this up and just, we have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number 23-11158, approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0. That leads us to item 7.5.
Item 7.5, approve ordinance number 23-11159 on first reading, approving the Santa Fe Showdown as a special event and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of barricaded public areas at such event.
Just for the commission's benefit, I can't speak to either of these in terms of fees, but both of this, the Santa Fe Showdown event and the Feast on the Fay came into as applications for special events, which are reviewed and approved administratively by staff. But under state law and our current ordinance, the part that the staff can approve administratively is the consumption of alcohol on a public street, which is why we're bringing these items to you. But there is a, a special event permit for Santa Fe Showdown, and the, one of the, the event take, is to take place on Friday, July 28th, in North Santa Fe Avenue, and that event is associated with the Lead Sled Event in Oakdale Park. And so, their general special event doesn't require city commission approval, but their special event retailer's permit requires your approval this evening. And their plan is, again, to have utilized North Santa Fe from Elm Street to just north of Pine Street. They would close that off with barricades beginning at 3:00 PM, and the event and serving of alcoholic beverages would be from 9:00 to 11:00 PM, with event tear-down from 11:00 to 1:00 AM. And the purpose of the event is to provide an event where participants and fans of the Lead Sled Car Show event can gather, look at car show vehicles, listen to music, interact, and have fun. It's a free event, open to the public. Again, it's in the 300 block of North Santa Fe, from Elm Street to just north of Pine Street. They'll also utilize Calvin Calp's parking lot south of his building on the west side of North Santa Fe, and two OCCK parking lots on the east side of Santa Fe that will be used for porta-potties and food trucks. The plan is to set up a stage in Calvin Calp's parking lot and have a band performing on that stage. There'll be a private party for Lead Sled participants inside Calvin Shop. The public portion of the event will be a BYOB event, and so they're not planning to sell alcohol, but there will be alcohol consumed within the barricaded public street. We did start to refer this matter to SDI for comments, then realized that Elm Street was the north boundary of SDI, so this is actually taking place outside of the downtown business improvement district. But SDI is aware of the event and is supportive of Mr. Calp's event, which is tied in with, with the Lead Sled Weekend. And so, this event has taken place in different forms for a number of years. This is the first year it's come in as a, as a special event permit. And so, your options this evening would be to approve the attached ordinance 231159. That would approve Santa Fe Showdown as a special event and authorize consumption of alcohol, alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on North Santa Fe during the event. You could approve the ordinance with any modifications to the location, size, or date, or time of the event. You could postpone consideration of Mr. Calp's request to a future date if you feel like additional information is needed from the applicants or staff. Or you could decline to approve the attached ordinance and deny approval of the proposed special event permit. So I think we provided you with a map of the event that shows the various event areas, and I've done my best to describe all the elements of that event, but the reason this is before you this evening is just to authorize the consumption of liquor within a public street.
Any questions? Just one, is there any attempt to control underage access to this BYOB liquor?
They are, they have some restrictions that they have to set up with Kansas Alcohol Beverage Control, and so, they have to make, they have to post certain signs, and they have to have provisions for monitoring to make sure there's no removal of any alcoholic liquor from inside the boundaries of the events. But those, those are things that they will work out with the state, so they've got to have a security and safety plan, and that has to be approved by ABC as part of their permit.
Does that include a 17, 18-year-old coming in and just walking up to somebody's private stash and getting a drink? A Feast on the Fay, they're going to have to have an armband to be served, you know, so the, the, the drink...
That is not...
Or control.
That is not the case here. They can monitor who they go in, but as the licensee, they would be responsible for that. They're going to monitor... but as the licensee, they would be responsible for that. They're going to monitor people when they come in the barricaded area. But I can't speak to how they're going to monitor that within the area. If people just have coolers or ice chests, that's a difficult thing.
I guess I would see this no different than the River Festival. You know, alcohol's allowed at the River Festival and there's no real way to monitor, you know, so it's, so. And I believe this has gone, this has been going on for how many years? This is not the first year.
This has gone on in different forms for a number of years on North Santa Fe and different forms and different organizers. This, this is a little more elaborate than it was in the past in terms of having the band and the private party in Mr. Calp's shop. But it's, the event seems to keep growing.
Yeah, and I think there was a band there last year too, if I remember right. So, but I, I understand.
Well, no, I mean, I appreciate the analogy. That's true.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
No different from the River Festival.
Yeah, there are requirements to monitor who enters, but that, the only place I know is that if you go into Mr. Calp's shop, you have to have a wristband to be served there. But out in the, in the general street area, it's going to be, as Mayor Hoppick described, people bringing in coolers or different containers similar to what they do at the River Festival.
Will they be required to have security?
They do have to have security there as part of their security plan they have with the state.
Okay. Yeah, this is a big event and I commend Mr. Calp for hanging into the end of this meeting, being the last on the agenda. Sorry.
Okay, any questions?
If you have any questions, you want to direct to him. He could probably do a better job explaining it than I can.
Do you have any questions or comments for the public?
Richard Albert Humphries, Slina, Kansas. With upcoming events that I definitely support happening, I really hope that we as a community try to work in some rideshare or something with OCCK that can get the families and friends home safely, really advocate for that part. But I'm really excited what we're doing here and guys have a great day.
Good afternoon. Steve Snyder, 655 Guernsey here in Slina. I've been involved with the Lead Sled since they came to town in 2005. The, the event that you're talking about with Calvin on the Santa Fe is not really sponsored by KKOA, but it is a support activity, really no different than, and Tom Pestinger told me I could use his name, that Tom and Tim have the burnout on Saturday night, not really official, but is more of a support unit of the, of the, of the weekend itself. The drags that I happen to be involved with, they are a part of KKOA. And a lot of that's because of the insurance requirement of the city and I understand that the need to have that is a safety issue with that kind of an event. But one of my biggest concerns, and I've heard this from several different people that have a special event, is, is related to the fee. Now, I wasn't aware when John spoke and I see Sandra Beck in the, was in the back about the Juneteenth of paying a $2,000 fee for use of Oakdale. But I know there's a, I believe it's like a $500 application fee. Is, is that refundable? Or I heard it was non-refundable. It could be wrong. But I, my concern for some of these events, and then we'll add the Juneteenth in there, is if those fees get to the point where we're concerned about not having them or running them out of town or just discontinuing them, I think we've got an issue there. I understand, and I was involved with setting up the drags and working with the city departments over the last 10, 12 years since I retired. And I understand the need to be reimbursed or at least pay some for just putting up with the things that the city has to provide for you. Barricades, parking bollards, fencing, whatever it may be. But I think there's a point where we may be getting to the, you know, where we may get to the situation where that fee is so excessive, I'd just hate to lose some of those supporting events, including Calvin Calp's event, including the Pestinger Brothers event. Maybe Juneteenth might fall in that category if it gets too, too high. So I would, I don't know what that fee structure is. I haven't seen it. But I've heard some of the comments about it and so I do appreciate City Manager Mike Skragg saying we might want to review some of those fee structures just to see where we are. I don't, I wouldn't say, I'm not recommending everything be free. That's not correct either. But it may be to the point someday that we're starting to lose some of those. And we'd hate to see the attendance of any of those events go down because the fee structure got so high that people aren't offering to put those on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Isn't the Lead Sled Event, isn't that the biggest event the city has host each year?
Question?
The Lead Sled Event, isn't that the biggest event we host all year?
Uh, other than the River Festival maybe, but yeah, it's right up there.
Standby question again. As a classic car enthusiast, I fully support this. I've been to several of them. As was well stated, it is supportive of the Lead Sled and the Lead Sled is such an event for those of us that live in Slina, have or work on cars and so many people that come from out of town, out of state. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Muff, approval of ordinance number 23-11159 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number 23-11159 approving the Santa Fe Showdown as a special event and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on North Santa Fe Avenue during the event. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five zero. Thank you for me. Okay, that will lead us to other business. I will look at my fellow commissioners.
I have nothing, sorry.
Uh, none, actually.
I just wanted to share that my wife and I attended the play at Theater Slina the other night, School of Rock. And Michael Spicer shared, wanted everyone to read this, and I thought it was worth repeating, from Vicky Spicer, the director of the play. "Over the many shows I've been involved with at Theater Slina that include young actors, I've often heard, 'How did you find such talented kids?' The answer is easy. We didn't. We raised them. Music teachers, dance teachers, church choirs, supportive parents and families. That's how they come to be such great talents." And I just felt that said a lot about Slina. But we have one of the greatest theaters in the region and really talented kids. And if you didn't see that, you missed a great, great show.
It was good. Okay, we have no meeting next week, so I'm afraid I have a list of things here. And I think I kind of forewarned Mike that I was going to bring. I know the county has gone to, has changed their publications on notices and I've been asked that question several times, so I'll look at staff to see if we've been approached and where we're at on.
Sure. Actually, we started looking at it before it kind of made the news with the county. And some communities are going to posting their, and the issue is designating Slina 311 as the official publication rather than the Slina Journal. Some communities have changed their approach such that they post their notices on their own website. And so we started down that path a while back. Sean Hennessy did a keyword search of state statute and found 502 references to public notice. Has sorted through those, has a little down to about 96 that seem applicable to first-class cities or the city of Slina and categorized those further in terms of ones that could be addressed by charter ordinance and ones that may or may not, or we may need some additional legal interpretation. So our intent is to come back to you in the next two to three weeks with a summary of that and really have two questions for you. One is your receptivity or getting direction from you with regard to posting our notices on our website rather than publishing them. And then secondarily, if, if some, if you don't want to do that at all or if some of those still require publication in a, in a print publication, then we can talk about transitioning to Slina 311 in place of the Journal. So it's been something that we've been working on kind of off and on, on the back burner for a while. And then when the county took their action, it kind of taken, took on a heightened importance. So we think we can have that finalized for you in the next two to three weeks.
Next?
You, you want to name the topic or you just want me to go?
No.
How much do we spend on those notices?
You know, that number has been thrown around. I do know, we've changed our publication requirements so we can publish in summary rather than in their entirety. So that saved quite a bit. We had, at one point, we, this is years ago, but we had a coded option that I think the publication for that alone is about $20,000. So I've heard estimates and then staff's come back and said, well, they're not confident of that number. So I don't know off the top of my head, but, you know, legal publications are at a higher rate to begin with and we do a lot of them. So it's, and in the overall scheme of things, it's worth taking a look at, I think.
Does the law say that the public, the announcement or publication has to be in a vehicle that would not cost anything to review? You know, like you can get, you can read the daily newspaper in the library for your charge. I mean, is there any requirement that way?
I don't know that it gets into that. And it varies with those 500-plus references. The language isn't identical across the board. But it talks about a official publication and what it takes to become an official publication. And then, as, as you know from other examples, we can charter out ordinance out of certain things if it doesn't uniformly apply. And then there's other language related to bond issuances that's more specific. That's why we've been parsing it as much as we have been.
I'm guessing 400 of those 500 were written before the internet existed.
Not all 500. Well, there are a couple, a star bond related, that actually require posting on the website if the, the organization maintains a website. So there are a couple that are, are with the times, maybe.
Is the new website being designed to incorporate some of this?
It can. The other functionality that we have is you can sign up by topic to receive notifications. So right now, that might be the Building Advisory Board, it might be the Planning Commission. I don't know how detailed you could dial that in in terms of public notices, but you could, we, we could have functionality where you opt in to be emailed those public notices.
Also, checking to see where we are in the development agreement on the housing. I know that the developer's looking at some secondary type housing or whatever. And I guess the question is, is there any way we could, because we're being asked a little bit about where we are because I know we need the housing, we're short apartments and so on and so forth. And I guess the question is, are we able to enter into development agreement even on the first phase that, you know, we know supposedly was going to be built out at Menards and then deal with the, the remaining doors at a later date?
We, we're finalizing, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're finalizing what we're calling a term sheet. There's kind of the outline of the development agreement that we should be able to bring to you in a couple of weeks. The developer certainly indicated kind of that phased approach to 250 units in Magnolia, but has spent a lot of time trying to flesh out the other possibilities. And, and there's been a lot going on between our legal counsel and him and conversations with the State Department of Commerce to get some clarification on details. But most recently, we've said, you know, we've got a lot of, a lot of variables, a lot of ideas being thrown into the conversation, but we need to dial into that, that base agreement. And from their perspective, they're wanting to verify as much as they can on the front end, which is understandable. But we're pressing them to kind of, let's get this dialed in. Let's, rather than try to sort out all these other possibilities that the developer's considering, acknowledge that those are things that could be proposed for, for future consideration. So I, I'm not blaming the developer by any means. I commend him for his creativity and his willingness to take on possible scenarios, but that's kind of splintered the conversation. We need to get it dialed back in.
I just, I just know that we do still have that, that need and I just, it just seems like we're dragging it on and like to start seeing some ground, you know, grow and something happen on some of this.
And he, when he was before you, he, he was aggressive in terms of when he thought he could get started. And, and we're, it's, it's lagging, so we're trying to push him.
One of the other things I talked to, to Mr. Skragg about was we had two ordinances today we passed that dealt with alcoholic consumption on the streets. And I was concerned that we have a certain location in our downtown area where we see individuals having alcoholic consumption on the sidewalk on a daily basis. And I'm not sure how our current ordinance reads and how that's, you know, how that happens. But yet we're having ordinances to have spatial events. So I believe that's something that staff's going to look at and try to bring back to us.
Right. Our, our current ordinance prohibits consumption, but doesn't prohibit or doesn't clearly enough prohibit possession of an open container. And so prosecutor's office has been working on that in conjunction with Sean Hennessy and legal counsel. And we, I thought we had it kind of finalized and we could make a, a push to get it on today's agenda. But it turns into the more universal application of cereal malt beverage, beers and different percentages and alcoholic liquors. And the real decision point that's left that we're going to have to bring to you is exceptions in, in public parks. We, that was kind of the, the final tripping point that caused us to say we're just not quite ready to, to put it on today's agenda. But I think in, in two weeks, we can have that back as well. So you might, you know, it sounds, may sound easier than, than it, than it first appears. But whether that's you've rented a shelter at one of the parks or whether it's the River Festival. If we have a blanket exclusion, then, you know, beer and wine at, at a family event would be precluded unless we are very deliberate in our exceptions. And so we just have to make sure we get that, that wording dialed in.
Perfect. Okay, and the, the last thing I had is, I've asked city staff to do a little research. From being on commission for five and a half years, it, it seems to me like we spend a lot of time just preparing for meetings. So I've had them do a little research to see how many of our peer groups and other Class I cities, how often they have their city commission meetings. And it's amazing, a majority of our peers and other communities have commission meetings twice a month. And I think that's something we should review because I feel like we spend a lot of time just preparing for meetings. And I think it takes away from staff being able to actually implement some of the things we're talking about. And so I guess I'm looking at my fellow commissioners to see if that's something that we, I don't know if we need to have a study session on or, or have a discussion to see if we have an interest in that. I believe there's also, when it comes to ordinances now, there's some changes that maybe you, you really don't even need to have a first and a second reading. Is that correct?
Correct. We, that, that law changed. We, by our own rules of procedure, provided for a first and second reading, but that's not necessarily required. And additionally, on a topic by topic basis, you could, as the governing body, choose to postpone consideration or, or have a second reading of sorts if that particular topic you thought merited, you know, additional time or, or public notice. But you certainly have the discretion, both in terms of the, the meeting schedule as well as first and second readings to, to make those changes. And I'd be happy to share the results of the, the survey. We didn't survey on first and second readings, but we kind of anecdotally know from dealing with bond council and others that deal with other communities that were the outlier doing two readings. I would tell you, I was surprised. I knew some communities met every two weeks, but of first-class cities and those that we identified as our peer communities, if you count study sessions and regular sessions as two separate meetings, and the reason I say that, some communities will have, you know, one, one meeting will be an action item, another meeting will be a study session. If you count those separately, we're, we're the only one that does two meetings a week, every week other than the fifth Mondays of the month. We're, we're the most meetingist community compared to our peers that showed up on the survey.
I think it's causing us to be a little ineffective perhaps in some of ours and no, that's nothing against staff. I think we're just always preparing blue sheets and, and I think we could be, I think certain staff members could be more effective at their jobs. So I don't know how we want to pursue that.
I'd love to hear more about this. I think all of your points, Mayor, are correct. And I can remember being at a Kansas League meeting and... meeting, at League of Cities, and talking to the other reps from other communities, and hearing how often they meet it, and how they did their story. And this crossed my mind years ago, I don't know why, I never brought it up, so it's a terrific idea.
Well, and I think we could do a better job of putting certain things on consent agenda items, too, and I'm not sure what cannot go on a consent agenda, but it's just like accepting that easement today from K-State Salina. To me, that was kind of a no-brainer that could have been a consent agenda item, you know, because all we were doing is accepting an easement that we had to have for water lines and stuff. So there may be also some things that we could be more efficient also, and put them on consent agenda items, once staff is comfortable that we're not pulling them off all the time items.
In my public management class at KU, there were a lot of city managers or deputy city managers, and a lot of them met every other week. And they enjoyed that, but with the caveat, your meeting will go four or five hours. And you have to, you know, I feel like in our case, we would probably, out of consideration of our citizens, have to move Citizens Forum back up front. And, you know, when you have the same amount of work to get done in half the time, the meeting gets twice as long, which means you have a lot more to prepare for, for each meeting. I'm just, we stop the discussion, I'm not saying make a decision now, but it's just a point, or yeah, or even three, I mean, there's a lot of variations, but.
This meeting's a pretty good example of that, that we were, we didn't meet last week, and here we're, we're four hours into this now, but we're good in our study session, so. But I have been surprised, I follow the Pika City Council, and, yeah, they just meet the first three weeks of the month.
I would definitely be open to hearing more about that option.
Okay, that's, I told you I had quite a bit, sorry. So, okay, with that, it is time for public forum. Again, this is Citizens Forum, this is a chance for individuals to come forth, they have a concern or comments they'd like to make. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. I will open the floor.
Mr. Ritz, would you let Ms. Beverly up first? She was approaching first.
Sandy Beverly, 141 South Clark Street. I sat through this meeting for one purpose, and as someone who has watched many things happen here in the city, and at this commission meetings in particular, and having a mother that stood up for everything that she believed always, in 1997, the Klan, Ku Klux Klan, threatened to march here in Salina. My mother, along with then-chief of police and the city manager, held a lot of meetings and encouraged people to realize that those people had a right to be here because they made the application to be here. I say this to say that if my mother, who lived through the things that she lived through and saw, could stand before the Klan, surely a city commissioner can sit through a proclamation for gay rights. If you cannot and serve the public, you don't belong in that chair.
I, too, came for that, for that reason. And when I found out about what happened, I was disturbed by it. It's one thing for any private citizen to get up and walk out of the meeting hall, but for a city commissioner, who ran for election saying that he could represent everyone, and as someone who is charged with representing everyone, to stand up and walk out, I think, was, technically speaking, a violation of your code of ethics. I'm just going to read you what your code of ethics says, that city officers and employees shall abide by the following general ethical principles. Place the public trust and interest of the city first. We're an old community, we're getting older every day. We had, we have 276 people leave this community every single year. If we continue to treat groups that we don't agree with as less-than-citizens, then we're going to continue to lose that, and we're never going to attract young people. B on it is exercise fair, honest, and unbiased judgment in one's role as a decision-maker and advisor. I don't know how you could have groups that come up and feel like they have unequal treatment, how they can feel like they're not being treated differently than everyone else. And then finally, F, is treat all persons with courtesy and respect at all times. I know you're a good person, Bill. I hope that you will reflect upon this and apologize that you weren't able to represent everyone, because my concern is, is that when you take over from Mayor Hoppick, that if you do this next year, it will totally be national news. We'll probably have boycotts from people that won't want to play at the Stiefel, artists that won't want to come to the River Festival. And you love the theater, and I'll tell you what, there's an awful lot of gay people in the theater, LGBT folks in the theater. Probably, Mayor, I'm disappointed that you didn't say anything as the head of this body. You and I both attend Trinity United Methodist Church. We have a lot of friends in the LGBT community, and the fact that you sat there silent, without saying a word about it, was distressing to me, because I know that's not the kind of person that you are, and I know that you would never do that yourself. So I appreciate the fact that you have your strongly-held beliefs. I hope that you'll take a mulligan, if I may, just say something, one part of the proclamation that you weren't here to listen to, and that is, is that whereas the city of Salina recognizes the ongoing struggle for full and equal rights for LGBTQ+ individuals, and the right to be free from discrimination, your standing up and leaving was a clear and loud signal of discrimination. Mayor, I'll give you this information, and I would just, I would just ask that an apology be made, because we can't leave groups of people out. That's happened in the past, and I think we need to do better. Thank you.
I'll respond to you, John.
Mr. Blanchard, Ms. Beverly. I do have deeply-held beliefs and values. This did conflict with my beliefs and values, and I have that right. I called Mr. Gonzalez and visited with him about this. He had no issue, no problem. And, yeah, I stand by my decision, and I'm sorry you feel that way, but there is no hate or animosity involved. I just could not acknowledge that I supported that proclamation. It was not geared to any one person. It was the topic as a whole, and that was why I, my actions were as they were.
Do I understand that as a public official, you serve the public? Is there anyone else that has?
Ken Ritz of Salina. With an intention of humor, I might mention that commission meetings are special events, so we should probably start serving liquor here, maybe even bring fireworks. But that's a very difficult area. Alcohol is just another drug. In small quantities, it's ripples, but we know that the problem is in larger amounts and that all the other drugs, especially now with the designer drugs, fentanyl seems to be the worst, but there's apparently a similar derivative that's more damaging and dangerous than fentanyl now. So that's, that's going to be a concern. If we're looking at changing frequency of meetings, Abilene has the one meeting, which is the action, and the next meeting is a study session. Rather than call it a study session, I would like to see every other be genuine discussion. That's the thing that I miss with our commission meetings, so often things are simply presented and then commented on, but they're really not discussed. And sometimes you have to discuss at some length before you finally get to the meat of the issue, as you work through things. But, but anyway, that, I did have something that is, I think, immediately irrelevant. I see both sides of having charges for costs for community events, although from one direction, what's the community here for but to serve the interests and needs? And we pay taxes to cover those general needs. And I'm wondering, parades, is there a fee? Goodness, those are expensive. And I have no problem with them being expensive, I mean, it's a community activity, but are these extra costs that parades incur? Does that just come out of the general fund? Or an allocation from the commissioners? Or is there a group that's levied? I think that all, you know, just needs to be looked at. Private events, if you have incur public costs, they should pay the cost.
We're going to review some of that, I believe, so, yeah, we have.
Yeah, that's something we really need.
Great, thank you.
Sure does.
I for one applaud Mr. Longbine for his stand that he made, and I sent him a message.
Give your name, please.
I'm sorry, Chad Farber, Salina, Kansas. And I'll repeat that, I applaud Mr. Longbine for the stand that he made. There is such a thing as deeply-held religious beliefs, and if something violates those, you have every right to stand up for your religious beliefs. And that's part of being an American, and I'm thankful for the freedoms that we have as an America, American citizens. And with that, I've heard several times that you're not having a meeting next Monday, is that correct? Is that due to Independence Day holiday?
It's 30, isn't it? It's next month, it's the 5th.
You would do meet, we?
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I looked, okay.
He's trying to get out of it. Trying to get out of it. Well, you want to get out, want to meet every other week? No, I'm just kidding. I actually agree with several of the things that you said, the spacing of the meetings out, I think would be beneficial. Perhaps even getting the packets a little earlier, ahead of time than just on a Thursday or Friday, would give you more opportunity to review those more in-depth, and I think that's a good idea. The other thing I would mention is, there's a lot of paper waste that goes along with the packets that are handed out, and I've learned that being on another commission here, the planning commission, and, I mean, this past meeting, we had a 270-something-page packet, which I know doesn't measure up to you guys, is what you have to study through, but those were printed eight, nine, 10, 12 times. I would love to see something digital take place here, computer screens in front of you, we could scroll through, just to save on some of the paper waste that takes place with all of those. I sent an email, and I haven't gotten a response from anybody yet. I would love to see an update to the Live Salina Plan as in relation to the population, the projected population as to where we are now, in reference to the housing situation. We have, if you've seen the latest numbers, our population has continued to decrease, where the projected numbers from Live Salina were projecting our population to increase. So I'd love to see a balance as to where our housing needs are now with those population numbers updated. So if that's something you guys could work on, I'd love to see that information. Lastly, I will say it is Independence Day coming up next week, and thankful to be an American, thankful for the freedoms we enjoy as American citizens, and I believe this is, if not the, it's one of the top of the list of the greatest holidays that our country observes, the birth of our country, July 4th, and so I hope we all celebrate it. And I know fireworks affect a lot of animals and some people with PTSD, but go out and celebrate the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you, guys.
Rosemary Myss, Salina, Kansas. I also applaud Bill for standing up to his beliefs, because even though you represent the community, when you've got your religious beliefs and your morals, you have to stick with your religious and moral beliefs, because that's what's happening to our country right now. Our moral and religious beliefs are going down the tubes.
Norman Mantle, Salina, Kansas. In here, this is the government. The Constitution says there shall be a separation of church and state in here. If you want to do it outside, that's fine.
You might want to read that a little closer, I don't think that's how it's worded. But anyway, I, too, stand with Bill, and I understand the proclamation, I understand proclamations, but I don't understand a proclamation to a sexual orientation. We're all Americans, we had Flag Day, one day, to acknowledge our American flag, and I don't know, I don't think we need a proclamation to state we're Americans, and I don't think we need to make a statement as far as our sexual orientation. We were born male and female, end of story. Thank you.
Can I ask the question? Which proclamation were you referring to about declaring that we're Americans?
I don't know, I said I don't think we need a proclamation. We pledge allegiance to the American flag.
But which one were you referring to?
And I believe the LGBTQ were making a proclamation for this to be a month to celebrate. Am I right?
But they weren't doing it on the basis of being, starting their right as Americans?
No, I'm not saying that. But they were making a proclamation for the LGBTQ community, which is their sexual orientation.
Correct.
Correct. As a physician, do you agree there's male and female, or do you agree that there's more than one male or female, or do you agree that there's more than two sexes?
Biologically, we all have tendencies towards homosexuality, use that as a generic term.
But that's an orientation. You were born with DNA, which specifies whether you are a male or a female. So sexual orientation is what I object to them, having a proclamation for a full month to acknowledge their sexual orientation.
It's their identity.
By their sex? By who they have sex with?
I'll bring you a booklet which explains the different terms.
No, you just read the scriptures, and it'll tell you male and female.
And I'll refer you to Mr. Mantle's comments. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
A second? A second? I guess I'll see you next week, no matter what I said earlier. Thanks.
I'd already started planning.